The second item is consideration of appointment of registrars, Mike Kickem for a term to expire April 1st, 2023. Third item, Alicia Goody, Leland Farms trustees, select board representative, with an update, recent repairs to Leland Farms, and a look at next steps. Item four regarding the sustainability coordinator is consideration of the final two candidates, who are Gino Carlucci and Dorothea Von Herter. Item five is 2020 annual town meeting and review of draft warrant articles. That includes the draft warrant and warrant checklist review, and then a review of other articles. Consideration of warrant articles for planning board zoning articles, Sherburne Housing Partnership with Addie Mae Weiss, Town Treasurer with Heidi Boyle, bond premium, OPEB trust fund, prudent investor rule. And then Town Collector Nancy Hess regarding Chapter 59. Then Energy Committee regarding community choice aggregation. And then Governance Task Force Two with the establishment of communication team. Remaining items are consideration of administration items and routine business with Finance Director, FY 21 budget development update. And Town Administrator Pine Hill Access Road Letter of Support. And Personnel Matter of consideration of appointment of interim Town Clerk Jackie Morris. And then Select Board Member Reports. And Adjourn to Executive Session Not to Return to Open Session for three items. And the exemptions are MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3. To discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the chair so declares, library. Item two, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator. Item three, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 1. To discuss complaints brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And the recommendation is to amend the agenda and move Executive Session, Item Three, to the beginning and go into Executive Session first.
Right, to return to open session.
Right, we're going to do the one executive session out of the room and then we'll be back. Hopefully it'll be a short time, but we will, we will be returning, so if you could all wait for us to come back. So, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so we are going to, as I mentioned, we're going to adjourn to Executive Session. The board will return to open session under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 1. To discuss complaints brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. I need a second and a roll call vote. Motion is seconded by Mr. Johnson. Having a second, we'll now have a roll call vote, Mr. Durensis.
Durensis votes aye.
Mr. Yan.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Morrell, aye. Having passed by a vote of five to zero, the open session is now closed and we will be returning to open session. We're now in Executive Session. Thank you, sorry for the interruption. One thing I forgot to do, we have public comment, and I do have one public comment from Darrell Beardsley from the Board of Health. So Darrell, if you could come up to the microphone.
Okay, so you identified me. So I just wanted to come and speak about the coronavirus, or COVID-19, however people are referring to it, since we've had a lot of questions about it at the Board of Health. First, I'm going to kind of start at the beginning, and that is that Ellen Hartnett, who is the Administrator for the Board of Health, in any other town she would be called the Health Director because of all the duties that she does take on in town. And she's very well informed on so many public health issues. And she's also participated for very decades in the emergency preparedness for the region that Sherburne is in. And in fact, there were many years where they kept asking if she could please become one of their leading members. But we had to repeatedly explain that as a small town, we really couldn't spare her time to go into that sort of thing. But she's thought of very highly. So she and others on the Board of Health staff have been tracking this issue since there were formal meetings with DPH beginning, very beginning of February. And there are routine conference calls and webinars and presentations and information supplied, and she's spoken to them by phone many times on various points. So it is something that the Board of Health has been tracking for quite some time. Also, we have experience with the H1N1 in terms of emergency preparedness and what went on at that time. We've been collaborating with the Dover Board of Health as well, and also communicating with the schools on what they're facing. For example, early on, it was probably in January, early January, there were discussions about students who were planning to go and spend some time in China, and that was something that was canceled. It wasn't a school-sponsored trip, but there were communications among the group who was planning that travel and the schools, and so they worked that out. For the most part, direction is going to be coming from the Department of Public Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health. We also use information, there are decision trees here from the CDC. So there aren't a lot of decisions that we need to make. There are some duties that the Board of Health has, and the agents that the Board of Health has, in particular, the Visiting Nurse Association that we use for people who have infectious diseases. There's a website that tracks known cases of the virus, and that is checked daily at a minimum by the Boards of Health in both Dover and Sherburne. And for cases, and then there's a set of procedures that if there is someone who has been identified as having the virus, that there's constant follow-up with them on how they're doing and what kind of quarantine and that sort of thing. So, and that's all confidential information, but that is something that certain designated people for Boards of Health have, or agents of the Board of Health. So some of the questions that we got today that were of concern is about people returning from vacation from other places, and having children who are in the school system. And there is, there are certain number of criteria that CDC has and DPH has in terms of checking, and people have to have symptoms. And so those who are not symptomatic, there are no particular actions that people can take to change their behavior. There could be maybe some outreach, or if that's a concern, certainly the school by sending out the information that they just did to parents in the region. You know, good hygiene practices and good practices, and if you're not feeling well and seeing a doctor and that sort of thing. So, basic information. So that is, you know, we will continue to watch it, obviously. It's something, we just have to see how it evolves. There is, there's work on a vaccine, but that's hard to predict when that will happen. And depending on how long things take, if it ever reaches here, will there be a vaccine ready or not? But then, again, that's not something that Sherburne has to deal with in isolation. We're going to be getting information, and drugs are going to be distributed by CDC, DPH, and that sort of thing. So it's not that we have to go out and seek it on our own and find those channels. I will say that there are, people are having difficulty getting masks, though, for emergency responders and health professionals and things like that. So that is an issue at the moment.
Great, thank you for the update.
I was just going to add one thing. I had asked Darrell, maybe, we meet two weeks from tonight on the twelfth or whatever it is. Maybe we could get an update, maybe Ellen could come in. Because we may have to think about things like letting town employees work from home, or things, there may be things that we won't pull the trigger on right away, but we may want to have in place a plan for how we have people work at home, or how we communicate, or things that are sort of above the health level, but would be caused to be enacted if there was a concern, just like Candy's doing, Superintendent Schools is doing.
And there's also, we have emergency preparedness plan for the town that covers lots of different issues, fires and floods and what have you, and this is also one of those things that's covered to some degree. So we could talk about, you know, what would a next step look like, or what happened with the H1N1, how did that proceed?
George.
Yes, go ahead.
So I know as a town council for other communities, we're having, the lawyers are getting together to get the paperwork ready for things like quarantine orders and all the rest for Boards of Health in Massachusetts. So I would encourage you to collaborate with Sherburne's Town Council to make sure that whatever paperwork you might need, not that, I'm not saying we need to do anything now, but that you have access, you establish that connection and make sure that if you ever needed any paperwork to implement some things like a quarantine order, that that would be in place and ready to roll.
Okay.
So you can communicate through, I guess, David? I don't know who at KPLO would handle that, but.
We'd call Darren and Darren will sign it.
Have Ellen get it, whatever.
Okay.
Unless Ellen has worked with a certain one in the past.
Right, I'll check with her because she would know.
Thank you, Darrell.
All right, thanks.
All right, moving on, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Good, that was a nice quick item. Did you want me to move any of these out of order? Eric has to leave by a certain time. I guess we could do this next one very quickly. So do I have a motion to appoint Mike Kickem for a term to expire April 1st, 2023?
As the registrar of voters, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, the next item is Alicia Goody from Leland Farms trustees, select board representative. Update recent repairs to Leland Farms, next steps.
Thank you, and I appreciate that there's a packed agenda, so I'll try to be brief. I'm the town representative for the trustees, the homeowners association at Leland Farms. I've been in that position for a little bit over a year, and I'm also a member of the Housing Partnership. And Leland Farms, I think, is widely thought of as Sherburne's crown jewel in terms of affordable housing. When it was first developed, that was the thought, and it's still, I think, appreciated by people in that respect today. Over the past year and a half, I've learned that that crown jewel has dimmed quite a bit. The luster of it has dimmed, and actually unfortunately, it's to the point of almost falling out of its setting. This is a problem for the residents who live there, but it's also, I think, a significant problem for the town, unless these issues are addressed. And Scott Martin, who's also on the board and is a resident there, will speak to the details. But I wanted to just let you know that as the towns representative, this is an important asset. And I've had a chance to look at the budgets, look at the financials, look at the history, look at the documents underlying the information that's in your packets. And I concur with everything that Scott is about to say and the materials that you have in your packet. And I know also Sean Colleen has been heavily involved with the water issues. You have a letter that was issued by On-Site Engineering in response to some work that's been done with Whitewater about interconnection with Woodhaven. So I'm familiar with all of that, you have that, I won't address it, but the water issue is a significant issue, as are some of the other issues you're going to hear from Scott, so with your.
Yeah, Scott, if you can close the line.
So as Alicia said, I'm Scott Martin, 6 Leland Drive. I have like a one to two-minute prepared statement that I'd like to read. Prior to that, I'd just like to introduce the other members of the Board of Leland Farms that are here. So starting the far end of the row is Mike Franchi, and I believe he's been in the community since 2002. Mary Beth Russell, excuse me, 2001, Mary Beth Russell, who's been in the community since 2015. And Joey Talbert, who's been in the community since the very beginning in 1999. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees at Leland Farms, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the Select Board. Leland Farms may be unique in all of Massachusetts. It's a condominium development that is a mix of affordable and market units, distributed between a standalone house and accompanying barn and four townhouse buildings. It's a land lease arrangement with the town owning the land and the community paying rent on a 99-year lease. Despite not owning the land, the community is responsible for maintaining all water and sewer infrastructure, as well as landscaping and building upkeep. Given that there's only one well servicing all 17 units, the well qualifies as a municipal water supply, making it subject to regulation by the Department of Environmental Protection. In summary, it's an affordable housing development running a municipal water supply on leased land. No doubt, one of a kind. While certainly the design of Leland Farms was well-intended, it has had unforeseen consequences. First, due to having a high ratio of affordable units, 59%, it's been hard for Leland Farms to maintain a comfortable reserve fund. The conventional ratio in most mixed developments is 80% ownership of market units to 20% affordable units. At 41% market rate to 59% affordable, Leland Farms has less market owners to absorb the burden of assessments and fee hikes. Secondly, water and sewer expenses consistently consume a high percentage of the annual budget. As a regulated enterprise, the well system is required to have backup pumps, sophisticated failover software, a backup generator, and an automated alarm system. The community is subject to comprehensive and expensive quarterly water testing. Given several well-publicized municipal water crises across the nation, the DEP now exhibits minimal flexibility and simply mandates expensive remediation at the first sign of an issue. A handful of recent high copper results have resulted in a DEP demand that the community implement a solution that may cost as much as $30,000, while we as a community are unsure we even have a problem. Lastly, the community at Leland Farms has had to deal with consequences from the flaws of the original construction. A fire on the property in 2010, caused by the contractor's failure to install a protective firewall, resulted in a significant escalation in insurance costs. The community's underground water tank began to leak and needed to be replaced. Substandard construction materials have led to premature end-of-life for our roofs, furnaces, and septic infrastructure. These circumstances and others have flipped Leland Farms from having a reserve early in its existence as a community to being in debt. Like many households in America today, Leland Farms is living paycheck to paycheck, adequately servicing debt and paying bills every month, but with little remaining for savings or capital improvements. Most importantly, the community has no capacity to deal with an unforeseen emergency expense, an occurrence which has happened almost annually in the last several years. In order to deal with these recent emergencies, the community has been forced to defer necessary maintenance, taken on more debt, and burdened owners with costly assessments. The monthly association fee for some of our affordable owners, factoring in assessments, is now over $500 a month, much higher than comparable affordable communities, and extraordinary given that Leland Farms has no amenities. Put quite simply, the community architected by the town in 1999 is not viable. We've reached a tipping point where some low-income owners are struggling to pay their escalating association fees. Any loss of revenue will put the association at risk of being unable to meet its fiscal obligations, leading to a spiral that can only be solved with another fee increase. We come before you tonight seeking any financial assistance or services you can offer to help get our community back on its feet. So in addition to the statement, I believe you've been furnished with a document that details 11 major events in the last 20 years at Leland Farms, that has totaled about $289,000 in expense for the community. All of them have been realized expense except for the last one, which is the DEP-mandated filtration system, which is pending. But again, if you take that $289,000 and annualize it over the life of the community, it's about $14,500 a year that the community has to come up with, has had to come up with. So we're just hoping that this will sort of spark a conversation, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, leading to the discussion about potential options to help the community.
George? Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I was a member of the Select Board that supervised the work that led to the Leland Farms development. So I have institutional knowledge of things going way back. First, I would say about the construction defects. We had, the Sherburne Community Housing Corporation was the actual developer, not the town itself. The Board, the members of the Board, the people who were building this, were not aware of these issues at all. In your report, it suggests that shortcuts were taken and so on. To my knowledge, no shortcuts were taken deliberately, no. No one did anything wrong, per se. Everybody was motivated to get the housing built, but also to keep the costs contained because it was intended to be housing that was going to be affordable, not high-end housing. I'll also say that the vision that we had for Leland Farms was, back then the town was fairly high-end and uniform. We needed diversity, we needed a range of housing. We wanted housing to be available to all kinds of different people in different walks of life. And so that was the vision. And that vision is of sufficient importance then and now for me to champion the idea that there should be some further public investment made. Again, not because of the history of the construction issues, but because the costs have gone way further than we thought they would ever be, and that the vision of having this kind of diverse housing may be at risk. I saw in one of the documents here that I read before the meeting, that we're almost at a tipping point, I think is the word that somebody used. In order to preserve the affordability and the diversity of housing in this community, that's, to me, such an important goal, that I think we should take some additional steps. And I'm prepared to support the recommendation of Alicia to make some further investment in Leland Farms. I was committed to this project for many, many years, so was the Board. It's been a long history of commitment from the town towards Leland Farms. There's no reason why that commitment should not continue.
One of the things I was most intrigued by was the discussion by Whitewater of connecting Leland Farms and Woodhaven for a single water system. That sure makes a lot of sense, particularly where Mass DEP is already supporting it. I think that's something we really need to explore long-term. I think that reduces the cost for both groups.
Gives you more diversification too, because I think they said there's three wells supporting Woodhaven. So, you know, if something happens to a well, right now, they only have one single point of failure with the well. So I think makes it less prone to interruption also.
We got a proposal from On-Site Engineering to conduct a study to make that connection, make that interconnection for $6,400. Is that something we want to take action on at this meeting?
Let's, I want to hear from Sean.
I want to hear from Sean, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead, Sean.
That proposal, I'm going to go over there and talk about that.
You're loud enough. We can all hear you, Sean.
The motion I'm going to be asking for is for not to exceed 15,000. The onsite proposal was 6,400, I believe. There's some overhead to Whitewater, because that'll be through them. And then included in that, not in that price, but in that proposal, they're estimating about $5,000 for well drilling, because a well rig will need to be there to test it, to help test the well's capacity. So we're estimating an exceed of 15,000.
Okay. I just want to give a general comment to some of what Jeff said about the diversification. It is good to be on more than one well. But big picture, long-term, it is a Band-Aid. We're putting more and more demands with Abbey Road and everything else in the downtown aquifer. We've seen the, I think all of us have seen the figure a million times how non-compliant the radii is for the septic in the wells in downtown, that, you know, at some point, those wells need to be addressed, probably within the next decade.
So does the plan include capping the current well that serves Leland Farms, or what would the?
Well, there isn't a plan, this is a study to determine exactly what the plan will be.
Yeah, okay.
Professionals that brought this up, that have really been urging this for quite a while, including our representative from DEP was to at least use the two wells that are being used right now. And Woodhaven's actually only used two of the three.
Okay.
Quality is best in two. Possibly not use the Leland well right now, but if we stay as well.
So we would do this onsite engineering, like you said, not to exceed 15,000, but that, but we're not going to move forward with the Whitewater proposal yet until we do this.
No, the Whitewater proposal is.
It, as well.
The Whitewater letter is proposing to do the onsite. That letter I gave you, the onsite quote that came in today was in reference to that letter. That's one of the say.
So the onsite, I'm just confused, because 15,000 for the onsite engineering, the Whitewater letter references 45,000 to 55,000.
Yeah, that is for a system that if we do nothing, there's other documents in there. The demand letter that I sent, it was one of many that Leland has had. If we don't investigate anything with Woodhaven right now, Leland is being required
Right.
to put in the treatment system.
Okay.
The intent here is no one will lead the treatment system.
Okay.
I may have misunderstood, I thought the 15,000 included the 6,400 from this onsite proposal, some Whitewater overhead, and 5,000 for well drilling.
Yes.
The thoughts all subsumed within the 15K.
Yes.
So hopefully by doing that, we won't have to install this $45,000 system, is that, that's, I just want to make it clear, so.
The intent is that Leland will not need that system to be on the system that's at Woodhaven. Someday, Woodhaven may trigger the copper letter, trigger, but if that was going to happen, that was going to happen anyway. And the two can say, can be on one system rather than having two systems on the same use property.
All right, that makes, that makes sense then.
So onsite works for Whitewater. Does that mean they're subbing to Whitewater, and Whitewater is our direct hire?
Yes.
Does anyone care that onsite is also the company that was doing the 40B? And doing the downtown water sewer? All right.
That's fine, I mean, no.
So my question would be, where is the 15,000 so I can make a motion to use 15,000 to support this, to accept this idea?
Do we have it in our budget under the consulting? Do we have it in our budget under the consulting? Don't we have a consulting line number, or have we already spent a lot?
Yeah, it's been used.
Okay. So I think we'd have to do it as a reserve fund transfer, right?
Yeah.
Sharon?
So I would make a motion to, to approve the expenditure of fifteen thousand dollars subject to a reserve fund transfer from the town's reserve fund.
Right. And the reserve fund transfer has to be approved by both us and advisory. So we'll have to, Sean, go ahead.
That's going to delay the...
I just, we've got to pay for it from somewhere, so we've got...
For me to do it, I put on my budget, and I'm coming back for reserve fund anyway.
That's, that's fine.
Take it out of your budget?
Budget money right now.
Okay.
All right, so I...
Can I suggest on the motion, can you make a motion for up to fifteen thousand?
Yes.
Rather than a fix?
Yeah, up to fifteen thousand.
Okay. Scott? All those in favor? Hopefully, this, I mean, this is in the right direction. We do want to support you guys. I know there's a lot of other issues that you brought up here, but this is kind of...
Yes.
Gets the, the immediate issue, hopefully, moving in the right direction.
Yeah, so...
So can I ask a question? Yeah, Scott, go ahead, Scott.
Sort of a final summation is, thank you, and this is a great first step. I think, you know, the overall point that I wanted to make sure that I made was that, you know, the, the situation at Leland Farms, you know, is, is that we're sort of just treading water, and it will, and it's never going to improve. So right now, you know, if, if you look at our expenses on an annual basis, and you define them between controllable and uncontrollable costs, like eighty-nine percent of our, our costs are uncontrollable. So every dollar we take in, eighty-nine percent of it, eighty-nine cents is already spoken for. So, you know, the only way that we're going to sort of get in a position where we have some financial flexibility is to be able to reduce expenses. So if our water costs go down through, through a plan like this, then that's fantastic. But again, you know, sort of, I would look to cut our costs by twenty to thirty percent annually, and that was, is about twenty to thirty thousand dollars. So this is about half of that.
Okay.
But that'll enable us to build a reserve, so that if, when something does happen, you know, we don't have to burden the community with an increase in assessments. And again, it's the affordable folks in our community that are, that are overly burdened whenever we have to, whenever we have to get more money from the community.
Scott, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The trustee's statement was very clear, and I understood it. I did not understand this loan chart, the calculation on the monthly HOA fee. This, these are two existing loans. This is the debt service for...
Yes.
Two, because it mentions one, sorry, one loan in, for twenty thousand dollars in September twenty nineteen. What was the other loan?
Related to replacing the well tank, I believe it was around twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten, and that was for...
That was re, yeah.
Another twenty thousand?
And that was sort of recapitalized when we, when we took out a loan for the roofs for eighty thousand dollars.
Great.
Some of that's still there. But yeah, so our debt service on an annual basis is about thirty-two thousand.
So we've got, these items that you've had, or you said that these are items that you've had to address, but they are addressed except for the last one, is that correct?
All those bills are paid except for number eleven, yes.
Do you have a capital plan? Do you have a projection moving forward, you know, like a five-year plan of what you...
You do, but we, you know, we have a list of capital improvements that we've determined need to be made, and on an annual basis, we target things to be fixed. But the last couple of years has been emergencies related to the water and sewer that have taken that money and diverted it. So painting buildings, fixing fences, like that kind of thing is, is getting more and more behind.
So we are committed, or at least I think I'm hearing, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I think we're committed to affordable housing. We're committed to Leland Farms. We're committed to having that be successful and viable. And I think you're hearing that we're willing to work with you. That's why the motion was adopted unanimously to do this fifteen thousand. This doesn't have to be the last little bit of help. It doesn't have to be the end of our discussion. Discussion can continue, because at the end of the day, we want everybody to succeed. We want Leland Farms to be a successful enterprise that would be a, a, a model for the rest of the state.
And it's not working with the fees that you guys are having to charge right now. So yes, I think we would like you to come back with a capital plan, and we can see how, what the town can do for assistance.
So my question on that is, can we use, we're setting up a housing trust probably in our town meeting, which one of the three, I think, criteria is use for affordable housing. So I wonder if that's a vehicle with which we could supplement their reserve fund?
I think, one thing, we're setting up the housing trust?
Yes.
We're not funding anything into the housing trust?
No, I know, but, but if we get funded for that development or something, that's going to be a vehicle for doing it, perhaps.
Alicia?
Yeah, not to pile on here, but one of the things that we thought might be helpful, we'll come back again and show its budget, but some perhaps deep room help and plowing, which saves some money, mowing saves some money. You know, this is for discussion with Sean, obviously, but private approval or disapproval.
Right.
That would save some funds to me, because right now, I believe the liabilities, the most recent financial reports today, eighty-five thousand in liabilities, seventy-nine thousand in assets. So constant, constant, the whole...
Because who plows, Kitty, I know you're back there, who plows Woodhaven? Is it, do you plow Woodhaven?
Yeah.
DPW?
DPW.
We, we pay them part of our fee for service. We are paying for the items that they do for us.
Okay. You're saying, like, as we're talking about with the water, with some economies of scale with Woodhaven, if there's ways we can share services, potentially, maybe that's a way to...
But we are paying for the service.
Right, you're paying, yeah, yeah, through, through the rental, through your revolving fund.
Right, the residents are paying for the services.
Okay.
And we get very fine services.
I bought her lunch.
Is Jerry Holbert here? The, I have a specific question that...
He's not, so he's our...
He's the property manager.
Yes.
Got a letter from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection asking for a response no later than March first, twenty twenty, as to a implementation of the optimal corrosion-controlled treatment strategy. I'm guessing that the conversation that Russ Tierney had with the EP constituted that, but I just, because of prior issues with the DEP and orders, I just want to make sure we met that date. In the past, we've had trouble meeting DEP deadlines.
You just met. That's why I didn't want a reserve fund.
So by approving that tonight?
I both just met that date.
Okay, great.
They wanted a plan in place. The plan is, is we're going to conduct that.
That probably should have been the first thing we said.
Open up with that.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out, the residents.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Alicia. And Sean. The next item on the agenda is sustainability coordinator, consideration of final two candidates. David, do you want to give a kind of brief synopsis of where we're at and what we're doing tonight?
Yep. I just want to make sure we have candidates, but I don't...
Yes.
He's here.
One is, yeah, Gino's here.
Gino's there.
He's hiding.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So if you remember, the Select Board back in, I think, November, had agreed to, or recommended to the town administrator to set up an advisory work group to screen applicants and advise on the top candidates, and for the town administrator to bring one to three candidates back to the Board for consideration. We used an outside HR consultant, Mary Beth Bernard. She had worked with us on the Council on Aging Hiring, Director Hiring, and the members of the screening committee were John Higley, Michael Lesser, John...
Fred Hyam and Diane Hansen.
Yeah, Fred, I think, and Diane Hansen. So they had two rounds of interviews, and I participated on the second round of those interviews. And the group was unanimous in identifying the top two candidates, and the HR director that we were using is, agreed and supported that, and I was in agreement with, with them as well. So the two names that came forward are Gino Carlucci and Dorothea Van Herter. And Dorothea is unable to make, make her interview this evening due to a conflict, which she is sending something to the Board, and I just haven't seen it yet. She may have sent it to the HR consultant. But we, I, we don't have anything from her. So we thought that we would proceed with an interview of Gino Carlucci, the internal candidate, and, and then the Board has the option of scheduling another night to see, to do the next interview, or, or come up with some other options to, so that we can move forward more quickly.
Dave, can you walk us through it? At our January sixteenth meeting, we were informed that the search committee had narrowed the number of candidates to ten. Were ten interviewed to reduce it?
In that first round, I think it was only seven. Michael?
There were ten applicants. We did a...
How many were interviewed?
We interviewed four in the first round, based on the screen. We went through and screened the ten, it was, all, all of the group basically did a collective sort of screening and working with the HR consultant. And we felt that we can narrow it down to four. That reflected a sort of a breadth of different types of, of people that could fill the position of some interest. And then we held the first round of interviews with just those four that recovered enough, and then we narrowed it down to the two. A week later, we then had the, the interview of the, of the final two that were announced here tonight. And then, and then we moved into a phase of some reference checking. It's been mostly done. And I will add, I'll stick my nose in a little bit of saying that, given where we are now, there are, the two candidates are very strong, they've so far gotten very strong recommendations. They have some different comparative strengths against the tasks, against the tasks that we want for the sustainability coordinator, as per the job description. I think there's more work to be done about thinking about how to make this work. However you proceed tonight, we can talk more after we decide what you want to do and talk, that, to consider the option that, that the advisory group with David can also sort out, given some authority to basically proceed with talking with them and trying to work out some sort of arrangement that might work for this position, given the strengths. And that we can basically then move ahead with making a decision as a group with David about that, since we've spent a lot of time talking to these people, and we've seen reference checks and others that aren't going to come out tonight and whatever else, but that that's an option for you to consider as a way you go forward.
I didn't understand what you're saying. You're saying hire both?
It's a possibility, that's something we haven't explored, that is tricky of whether we...
Michael, I've got a request from the back of the room that they can't hear you, so if you could...
Oh, okay.
If you're going to speak a lot, we're going to have you go to the microphone.
I'm just about through. I'll speak a little louder, I'm sorry, but, but there are some options to consider that haven't been fully played out, that, I'm not saying that we would do that, but I think that it'd be something that I think the group, that given the work that we've had and our experience with this, and I think the knowledge that the group has, and also has to recycle and others, and David, that we are given the opportunity to work that out. And because we are taking, it's taking time, where you want to grant us the authority to consider granting us to work that out with him and move forward with a hire, given what's coming up for the, for things. But I just put that on the table for you people to think about as a way to move forward in a practical way, and relying on the fact that we've spent a lot of time working on it, and more than what you might see tonight, or even try to do in a limited meeting in the future.
Okay. I'd like to hear from, before, Jeff, I think, since Gino's here, I'd like to hear from Gino, and, and then we'll discuss after, after that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Do you have specific questions?
No.
You just want me to talk about my interests here?
I would like to hear, have your interest in the sustainability coordinator position, and I don't think it's like a more, it's a formal interview. It's more just to talk to, you've already been interviewed. We don't need to do it again. It's more...
Exactly.
Talk about your strengths with the position, and I mean, we all know you, so, but...
I know. Well, mostly, I've been doing a, a good part of what the sustainability coordinator is expected to do already, and it's actually a part of my job that I enjoy a lot, and I would very much welcome the opportunity to expand that part of my position. So that's, that's why I was interested in, in doing this. And the flip side is, I, I would have been sad to stop doing those parts of my job. So that, that's, also, I mean, I know you have, I believe, my resume and cover letter and such, but it's, it's something I've been interested in for many, many years. You see, when I worked for the City of New Orleans, I had a similar role. I was Director of Environmental Affairs and was involved in multiple types of, of environmental issues, and it's something that's near and dear to my heart. So for those reasons, you know, I'm very interested in, in expanding my role in that.
Go ahead, Paul.
So first, let me say that, that I've had occasion to work with you on and off for years. You've been here for a while, and I am very grateful, not just me, on behalf of the community, very grateful for all that you've done for the town of Sherburne over the years. I think we're all familiar with you, and for me, I have a, a view that you're excellent at what you do. So I say that as a sort of a preface to the question of, the idea behind this citizen article that started out from the beginning was that there be a particular focus on the sustainability part of the job. So apparently, the sponsors felt that what was being done wasn't enough. Do you feel that you can, with all the other duties that you have, which again, as I say, have been excellent, feel that you can provide the kind of focus that the citizens were talking about on just the sustainability piece?
I do, because the, the idea would be, the amount of time I spend here would be increased, so I could devote that additional time to those specific duties. It wouldn't be just trying to squeeze it into what I do now, where I work twenty-two hours a week. My, my time would be expanded, and, and those extra hours would all be devoted to the sustainability portion, as I understand it.
You go to forty hours?
No.
How many hours do we have for the sustainability?
I'm guessing he would end up around...
I could talk to someone if you...
Go ahead.
He would probably end up around thirty-two, thirty-three.
I would like to make a, a comment here, and I'd actually like to make a motion, I think, tonight. One thing is that, you know, I feel we have to do something, the citizens, we voted on this last April, it's been eleven months, so, not only that, we have twenty-five thousand dollars that we can start using. So even if we use it fully, we'll only spend half of it by June thirtieth. So I think we need to move on this. I would like to reach a decision tonight where they can go and take the ball and run with it from here on, so, and not have to come back to us again. I've talked to a number of people offline, so I understood the issues. They, they are very interested in both candidates, so they have considered a teaming approach while they'll actually hire both people. They'll give Gino additional hours and give this other woman, Dorothea, a role also, and hire her a certain number of hours. When we went back, we originally said nineteen and a half, because we wanted it to be unbenefited position. It turns out, if you hire two people, first of all, it gives us more flexibility. If we have a peak, like a big grant that takes a lot of work, maybe they work more than that number of hours in a week. It gives us two different types of expertise, so they have complementary expertise, so I think that would work well, but we're not as tied to the nineteen and a half, because if, if you split the hours between two people, you could do twenty-five hours, and one person could do seven, and the other person could do eighteen, or whatever the numbers are, but the nineteen and a half was intended when it was only one person.
So I think that, that's still the target. We'll have to see what the budget is, but we have twenty-five thousand dollars to spend. But I don't view the nineteen and a half as being as relevant if we go with this teaming approach, which the, the, the four-person group that interviewed and, and plus David that interviewed and, uh, read the recommendations is, um, majority of them are supporting this, uh, concept of having two people hired for this position, splitting the hours and, and assigning and the, the work in that way. So what, what my motion is, I'd like to make a motion now that we authorize the-
Before you go on, can you clarify? You said a majority of them, or by that, I assume it's three out of the four?
I believe that's true. We can, they're here, I can, you can ask if you want, but I believe that's correct, yes.
I think all four were on the same page-
Yeah.
-of how to proceed.
Uh, yeah, there's variations of the opinion. It's quietly that it was hard to, it's hard to follow through on some of, on this kind of option because we were not given, we didn't have the time or, or we weren't having the, there wasn't the time or the authority at the point then to actually go pursue what, how that would work and to sit down and work on it. That's what I'm sort of, what I was requesting is that once we get the, the authority to do that, we can actually figure that out. But therefore, it's hard to say where everybody is because we, we didn't get to that point yet in, in the process where we could sit down and say, okay, sit down and say, let's actively put our heads together about it. That wasn't, that wasn't basically in the cards at the moment, which we'd like to have so we could do it, we could figure out something. But, so, but I would say that there's probably a way to work it out amongst the four of us that we've come to some terms, uh, that it would work.
One question on that as well. Are the candidates interested in?
That, we, you, that's part of the issue of, we're talking about it now, before, it's a little of a chicken and egg-
Right.
Is that it's been an idea floated for a while, but we haven't had the ability of the time to basically go and explore that side. So I think we can figure that out if we're given the authority to pursue that and work that out.
To me, the group, um, I would prefer not to have the group, um, that they fulfilled their role in making, doing the screening and making the recommendation. We brought the names, the top two names to you. This thing of, um, being able to utilize both of them is, uh, um, can work. I, I spoke to, they've both been spoken to about it, actually. But it needs us to sit down with the finance director, um, the employee, and then see what is left over and how far it'll go. But my goal is to get into what the job description says, which is supervisory functions, our position reports to the town administrator and functions under the general supervision of the energy committee. So I want to get the position working with the energy committee as quickly as possible. And, and I think that's where, that's where, that's where it should be.
Now, one- Before, I know you have the motion that you want to finish, but I just want to bring up one, when you said going from nineteen and a half to twenty-five, that makes me a little, I know, or something like that.
Yes.
One, one concern I have is, yes, this year we have twenty-five thousand.
No, I understand.
I, I, and I know, when you guys first presented this to us probably about a year ago, the first thing you said was this is a position that pays for itself. And it was about the grant writing.
It brings more money into town.
Right, exactly. And that's, so I would love to get this off the ground to see, before we ever even talk about increasing hours, let's see that it actually makes a return to the town. That was the first point that they brought to us.
And I have requested an earmark for next year.
Okay.
And, and the, and the greater amount that we had requested last year.
Okay. I guess when you said the additional, that-
That was just me speaking, but the nineteen and a half was arbitrary so that it wasn't a benefited position, so it may or may not apply. We will have, I don't think, be able to spend the twenty-five thousand, so we will have some carryover funds. So I think that the funding can be arranged. And we probably have to prime the pump. It will pay back to Fred's point, but not without us expending some money upfront to cause it to-
Good understanding. David, can you clarify? You said that you spoke to Gino and Dorothea about this idea of a shared position. What did they say?
I didn't speak to them together, but with the HR consultant.
Yeah. Gino's here, but-
He's sitting in front of a microphone.
We felt that the, the strengths of each of those candidates fit well together. So one had analytical strengths and outreach abilities that would complement-
Well, I understand the rationale. I'm trying to figure out, it's a very specific question. Are they interested in a shared position?
They both are. Yes.
Gino, go ahead.
Sure. Sure.
Yeah, no, I just, I, I heard there was a discussion. I'd like to know what they said.
And, and it's not, um, with the other candidate, it wasn't an all or nothing, nineteen hours or nothing. It was interested in doing work, even if it was low, project-based work.
Go ahead. Yeah, if you could just, your interest in a shared position.
Yes. Uh, I, I mean, depending on the specific details, I, I had no problem with, uh, um, you know, splitting the duties and splitting the time.
Yeah, looking at the resumes, I mean, you've been doing grant writing for years as a consultant at the city of New Orleans, the town of Sherbrooke. I, for my time on the planning board, I'm familiar with some of that. Looking at Dorothea, this, it looks like she's done more community outreach and education. So it looks like you've had two different, so I understand the rationale. I just wanted to find out before we go down this path, whether it makes sense.
Well, I'm not committing to a path, but I want to delegate the authority to this, I could read the motion in a minute. I, I want us to delegate the authority to this David and this four people to make the hiring decision and work out the arrangements, specific ones, but give them the authority to hire both if they, that seems like it'll work. I do think it makes sense.
I don't think we need to, though. David has the authority to do that.
I wasn't sure.
We've already, we've already discussed in hiring both to some capacity.
The board of selectmen has the authority.
So we don't need to make a motion, you don't think?
No, David has the authority to do that.
Um, I guess, I, I don't want to make it too contested, but I would, I would like to figure out what, to what extent the group, advisory group has some sayings. We have not been always kept abreast of things despite it, and there's been some difference of opinion as to what we are as an interviewing group, a screening group, or advisory group.
Michael, there was zero difference of opinion.
Well, the problem is that I would like to be part of the decision as to how-
Okay.
I personally would like to be part of that decision.
We asked you to, we asked the advisory group to present the candidate, which is what you've done.
No, the, I, but result, even during the division-
And it's to the town administrators.
During the division of the labor between the two jobs is something that I think would make sense to participate in. You'd have to agree with that, and I don't want to make it too contentious.
Once they're hired-
You need to make a recommendation. I served on both of the fire chief selection committees and we made recommendations to the hiring board. So the hiring authority, this position is going to report to David and the select board, not to a group, an ad hoc group of four people to conduct an interview. So I, I, you know, I, we want to hear the recommendation, but I'm not willing to delegate that.
Once they are, once they're brought on and hired, they're under the job descriptions.
Correct.
And that is the energy committee. That's the, the first one Gino would have to be meeting with on, uh, getting things off the ground.
Well, I, I, I'm not understanding that. I, can we delegate the authority, David? I think we need to hire this person now, so I don't think-
David has the authority. I think we, I think the motion would be more that we're in support of this, of splitting the duties between the two candidates and David can, David has the authority to go ahead and make, make an offer to the two candidates.
And to get it done.
To get it done without us having to, it doesn't have to come back to our board.
That's more or less what I was proposing.
Yeah, go ahead.
If that doesn't work, then one or the other has to be hired. The hiring authority at the end of the day is the board of selectmen. And so if we have to choose one or the other, that's not a decision that should be delegated, that should be decided by the board.
Okay.
It sounds like it's been vetted, though. That's what I'm hearing. It sounds like it has been vetted and probably will, will go through smoothly. To confirm, there's no vote needed by this board? I don't think so.
Well, just for the sake of, of clarity, I want to second the motion that was intended to be made, that we seek a shared position and that, uh, the town administrator, with whatever help he thinks necessary proper, put together a deal.
For the two candidates.
For the two candidates.
Yeah, I'll second that, or, I'm sorry, if that's-
That's pretty much what I had planned to say.
Okay. All those in favor?
I have one.
So that's-
Thank you.
I guess, you're not meeting for a few weeks.
Right.
I'm gonna, I'll push it a little bit. I know I have to work with David and we've been working well, and, and I will just press the case of whether that, with the authority that you've given him, that there's some recognition of to what extent we haven't been able to sit down and talk about this stuff. And, and I don't want to feel, I want to, I'll say it here, I don't want to feel that for some reason, I'll make up a worst-case scenario, that we're having some significant difference of opinion between a large part of the group and David, that, that some guidance that, that, that it's important to get a consensus from the whole group and it's not a decision made, you know, by the-
Michael, the job description you came up with says, "under the general supervision of the energy committee." That's the primary group that these people got to work with, not, not with me.
Sorry.
And are you on the energy committee?
Yes, I share that energy committee. No, I, I, I own bring it up because I have not felt necessarily always part, the group has not always been part of this process.
Right.
Okay? For example, just hearing that people have been talked to about the job sharing, that was not shared with us. Okay? It's news to me tonight. I spend a lot of time on this process. I have to deal with, I'm trying to be very polite to the process and respectful of it. And I'll be a little complaining in the sense that to wait to hear tonight that, yes, the applicants have been talked to about this, where I've tried to be particularly judicious in dealing with that, is a little disturbing. So therefore, I just wanted to be clear that it's out here, that the group is fully part of this process and do that so that I don't feel like we're marginalized, again, in, in some steps. That's all I want to be, although I'm public about. And, and even though you're the hiring authority, you spent a lot of time on this, and we have to deal with a lot of implementation.
I understand that, but I also, the town administrator, his job and the job description is for him to hire them. So, and at the end of the day, I'm hoping he's the one talking to the candidates and not a group of volunteers. That's, that's, he's our town administrator. He's our town administrator, Michael, and I think you've got to respect that.
No, I respected that very carefully. I'm, I'm, I'm making the issue of that, I wish there was a little bit more communication the other way. And I hope that that stays strong and respectfully improved. And I wanted to say it here, so I don't want to have to deal with this later.
Okay. But I want to make sure you respect that he's, his position as the town administrator.
I have done it. I have carefully done it, okay, to buy, to, to great cost of sitting around waiting, okay?
Well, I think the other thing you've heard from the discussion is, we want to get this person or person hired quickly. We don't, the, the process has taken longer than it should have, in my opinion, so-
So if he has to consult every, I mean, I think he should work out a deal with them and, and-
You don't want to go down the issue of where delays come from, okay? So I agree with you, okay? We have been extremely responsive to that process, so the idea that consulting with us might take time is, has not been the-
My comment was perspective only. I want to get this person or persons on board as quickly as possible.
You share that concern. I just wanted to get that other information.
Okay, we got to move on. Yep. Okay. Item five is the 2020 annual town meeting and review of draft warrant articles. We have a warrant checklist here in our packet. Um, I think, and, and the warrant as well. I think we should run through the checklist first and see, and then I know we have specific ones that people are here to discuss tonight, so I think, but I think what makes sense first is let's run through the checklist, make sure there's nothing on there that should be crossed out immediately. I know, Paul, you had brought up the fact that we may need to reopen the warrant. There were a couple of items that you potentially wanted to add. And I know Heidi, you, you as well, wanted to, and, no more capital items. I'm not going to go for that.
I stack it back.
Okay, we're not opening the warrant unless Sean's out of the room. So let's, let's just run through the warrant checklist here. Uh, I think the first, one, two, three, four, five, I mean, those are all standard, I think actually through-
Through ten.
Through ten are all just standard items that we would have on the warrant anyway. Um, then eleven is all capital. And I think we've, we've talked to most of these, I know we've talked to Zach and Rick Thompson and Sean, and Sean, and Sean, and Sean, and Sean, and Sean. And, and I don't, what's the status of the capital for Pine Hill School?
Yeah, thank you. That's the, I align.
Yeah. Well, you know, have you heard anything about capital for Pine Hill? Has anybody heard anything about the Pine Hills?
The Pine Hills, is the Pine Hill School reservation?
The cap, any, it says capital and it says dollars to be determined. I know we've-
The, the one that I just got from, uh, Kisha was forty-six thousand.
Forty-six, okay.
That could be forty-six.
Okay. I just, we hadn't, we've talked about all the other capital items, but that one we haven't talked about. Um, the other one, oh-
There was also a placeholder for the regional school committee capital items.
But the regional school committee does not, they have enough E and O that they are covering their own capital this year.
So that one's going to be deleted?
Yeah.
And they delayed their roof, I think.
Yeah, they delayed the roof and they have enough, I think, overage of their E and O, is that right? Am I saying that right? That they're going to cover any capital items through that.
Yep.
So we're all agreed on item twelve?
Well, and one other thing I wanted to point out on here, we have the Pine Hill access road. Um, we met, what day was that? I've met, had a meeting every day this week. Tuesday? No, yesterday.
Yes.
I can't remember. Anyway, one day this week, we met with Dr. Keough and the chief of police and Sean and Addy, you were there, and Sharon and Heidi, just to talk about what we're asking for this year. We're not asking for, originally, we thought about asking for the, to pay for the whole completion, but I think what makes sense this year and at the state that it's at, we need to have all the engineering and, um, a traffic study and everything related to how we are going to finish the road done first. So we're going to go to town meeting and ask for those, as we said, of soft costs to get the road ready, prepared, so we could come next year and be more knowledgeable about the exact cost of what it would be to complete the road for the safety issues that are at Pine Hill.
And that's this one twenty K.
Yeah, the one, the one twenty's too big, though, right, Sean? It's eighty. Didn't we say, in our meeting the other day, we said eighty?
Eighty would be a pretty light on contingency.
Okay. Well, let's get that worked out before, yeah. We just need to figure out what that number is.
You need it tonight?
Not tonight, but I'm just saying, we're just running through this of things that need to be done in order to wrap this up before the March, what day is, March twelfth is the public hearing for the advisory?
No, I want to say, but we're meeting-
Oh, we're meeting on the twelfth, so I'd love to, that night, we're going to want to vote on the warrant.
Yeah, hopefully capital budget and-
They're all meeting on the twelfth as well. Are they with you?
No. They must have a separate meeting.
Right.
Carol?
Are you going to sign the warrant that night?
I would hope so. If we have it ready to go, um, that's probably a good time, is that ever?
You might not.
So will you open, close, and sign it?
No, I'm, um, I think, I was thinking of, of whether we're going to open the warrant tonight or not.
Not with Sean.
Thank you, Carol. I'll, I'll ask you to escort him out, or John with that mask.
No.
Um, so, okay, so good. I think that's it for capital. Use of free cash, that's, that's a standard article. Um, Corey Lincoln, we're going to discuss the governance task force article here a little bit. Yep, she's here, so we'll talk about that when we get to it. Personnel admin plan?
I have an update from Darren.
Okay. Do you want to do that now or, yeah? Do you want to do that now, or, yeah? Because you're not on the list of people-
We can do it. I mean, yeah, I'm bringing that, but-
David, yeah. Thank you.
We haven't done this in the past, but if you look in the Personnel Administration Plan-
Yep.
There is an Appendix A that's attached to it, and it lists all the town positions, all the regular part-time and full part-time, and it breaks them into exempt and non-exempt positions, and it never gets updated, although we approve new positions and new titles all the time, but it's never gotten updated. So what we want to do now is make sure that that's updated.
Okay.
So, we have a council opinion that the Personnel Board, as these things get approved or changed, we can update that Appendix A as needed, but at town meeting, Darren recommends we bring the most recent version in, to town meeting in an article form to be adopted. I think-
This is standard language that almost every one of my towns has already on the books, so-
Yeah.
They're just copying it from other towns. Absolutely makes sense, so you don't have to wait. If we have a need for sustainability coordinator, we want to get that going mid-year, you can have the Personnel Board make what's called, it's sort of a temporary amendment to create the position, and it's then ratified at the annual town meeting. This is just housekeeping, as far as I can tell.
Yeah.
It's not a substantive-
So what we've done in the past is we've assumed that the positions are getting discussed through advisory and that they're vetted that way through town meeting, and that's the approval of the personnel list that we get with the budget. But people don't really see those, like this list, so this brings it out. I want to also see if it could be attached or wrapped into the omnibus budget article and we can eliminate the, as a separate article.
Nancy Hess has an article for payment of tax, but-
Yeah, she'll be here tonight.
Okay. Community Choice Aggregation, I know that's on our list for later tonight. Affordable Housing Matters.
Addy May's here tonight for that.
Okay, great. And then we have the four Planning Board articles, which I know we'll discuss in a little while. And then Article 23 with Coolidge Crossing, that's one I put on here. We, a group, a couple of us, Gino and I, and you were there at the end, and Addy May, met with the developers yesterday, and just to kind of what their plans are, their plan is to come to our meeting April 12th to, to April, sometime in April.
April 9.
What, April 9? I knew, it was one of our meet, our first meetings in April. They're going to come to present their plan for the development of the apartment building at Coolidge Crossing, so we can start moving forward to that project that we've been talking about for three years, since it was approved at, since it was, you know, talked about at town meeting. I think we're, the potential article that we would need on here was to give, depending on our approval of an intermunicipal agreement with Framingham and Natick for water and sewer, we would need to give them, Gino, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was an easement in order to access the water and water lines, because what we talked about at that meeting yesterday was that we don't want to own the water lines or the sewer lines as a town. Framingham and Natick don't want to own them, so what would happen is they would be private water lines owned by the Condominium Association, which also helps protect from your issue, Paul, where you said you don't want Leland, if it's a privately-owned water line, they can't come to us and say, "Well, we need to tap into this development on Leland."
Interconnections and extensions.
So that's maybe a solution to that as well, that's in the intermunicipal agreement. But they would, they would need an easement in order to access those water and sewer lines.
But what you have down here is land use.
Right, it's not a zoning issue, so it wouldn't be that, that, this just was yesterday, so that's, that's what we talked about.
But that's currently not on the warrant, so we'd have to reopen the warrant as soon as Sean leaves to have this as an article.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I had put, I didn't, I never even put the land use zoning, it was just more of a placeholder for Coolidge Crossing, so we could-
Do we need to, because they had talked at some point of maybe increasing the number of-
That was part of the discussion, but that's not something that's approved at, that's approved by the ZBA.
Okay.
That's not something approved at town meeting, how many units it is.
Okay.
But what they're, what they want to do is instead of a 40B, well, it's a 40B, but it's through a lip, where it's a, so they come to the town and it's something that helps it move along faster, where we as a select board sign off on the project, because it's something that can move it forward faster, rather than what we just went through on that other project where we were trying to, you know, fight it, this could be one where we could-
When we do that, we would have input from the Board of Health or any other committee.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And they would, so that's why they want to come to us in April, so they can present their plan. They're talking about, you know, the way they want to lay out the units, and by doing public utilities, they have more-
Flexibility.
Flexibility, and he talked a lot about landscaping and, you know, so it's not as intrusive with that, with the number of units. The number of units that he's talking about is 120, that's what he brought up. That would put us, I think, you've said, John, that would put us over our 10%, probably through the 2030 census. So that would really help a lot when it comes to the affordable housing discussion that we've been having for a long time. Addy May, do you have something to add?
I just wanted to clarify that a lip, a friendly 40B with the let for approval of it, is approving the application, it's not approve the project as a whole. It goes to the ZBA, it's still going through having a hiring of a peer review-
Right.
And all the review of all the various levels-
The last-
New conservation, new water health. So it's not saying, you know, okay, it's done, it still goes to the regular project, it just have a little bit more cooperation, right?
And with the public utilities, the Board of Health is actually probably going to have very little.
They won't, yeah, it'll be-
It'll be, the conservation does, because there are wetlands on that property.
We may not need to do, I don't have the land easement, but the sewer is going to Natick and that won't be our land, I think it's mainly-
Well, no, and actually, what they said yesterday was what Natick would prefer and what makes more sense, they're going to be putting the water lines in the road anyway. Natick would prefer, based on their sewer system, that it go to Spine Street.
Oh, okay.
So they'd run it along, along Coolidge.
So it would be the same route as the water lines partway.
Exactly, exactly.
Partway and then they'd split.
They would split there. They would cook, because there's a, the way their infrastructure is built-
Makes sense.
Spine Street's a better place for it to go, rather than through the neighborhood behind.
Probably a shorter distance, yeah.
The fire hydrant there, that, that's a Natick fire hydrant, isn't it, the one that's really close?
Not positive. Did you know Sean would know?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
Because that house, I think, is on Natick water.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have the Natick water, right?
Yeah.
Right, so anyway, that's-
It's close, yeah.
So just to give everybody heads up, that will be coming to us in April, but the warrant article will be for the easement in order to access water and sewer, assuming it's approved.
Because the warrant would have to be printed around the 7th of April, I think, so-
Right, no, no, I'm just saying, yeah, we would have it in the warrant for, because we're all, we're asking it for it as an easement-
Right.
If it's approved, for them to access the pipes.
The easement vote is a simple majority?
Yes, that's what I understood yesterday, right, you know?
Yes.
And then the last article's a citizen's petition, which we're not discussing tonight. So, back to our agenda-
Do you have any language on that?
No. I mean, other than what the citizen's petition says, which is a traffic study, which we're actually proposing to do in the Pine Hill Access Road, and to delay the start times, which is not our authority or the town's authority, it's the school committee's authority, so I don't think there's going to be a lot of discussion to be had about that. Anyway, so we're going to go back to our agenda, which, the next thing we have on our list are the Planning Board zoning articles.
Wait a minute, I thought you were going to let me-
Well, do you want to, do we want to open the warrant now, or do we, yeah, we can do that.
Or do you want to wait? It's up to you.
One suggestion, two, I'm interrupting you, is maybe we let some of the people like Corey or do some-
I think I'd rather get John out of here first.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Well played, John.
He's got a whole life.
That's fine, however you want to do it.
He came in with a Wuhan feeling.
So, so do you want to, yeah, let's get those, let's go through these, let's go through these that are already on the warrant, and then we'll talk about what else we need to do.
Go ahead, listen.
So it looks like you have four articles.
Yeah. Okay. And as always, I have a hand. Would you take my question?
I will, pass it down.
Oh, this warrant article, again, is focused on open space preservation.
Which one, this is number 21 on our list, I think.
This is, okay, I didn't go to the number.
We probably don't even have our list, but just for our clarification.
Okay.
It's in your book, it's not open space.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to look at the handout now, that's sort of to take home and look at later for remembering some of the things I said. It's a reference. The point of this warrant article is to revise our zoning bylaw to replace what is now a special permit bylaw for open space subdivisions with a section on subdivisions that is not a special permit, but that allows open space subdivisions by right. You saw this, an earlier and imperfect version of this two years ago, but the summary I gave you simply shows what we've changed from the existing bylaw, which is on the books and is a special permit. It was passed in 1996, and in 1996, there had been basically no subdivision development for at least two and a half decades. There were a lot of subdivisions built in Sherburne in the 50s and 60s, in 70s, that slowed down considerably, and ever since then, there's been very, very low levels of housing construction in Sherburne. As we all know, all too well, that's changing right now with the housing development pressures in Boston. It's not surprising that developers are looking at Sherburne, where we have many properties that are privately-owned, large enough to hold a subdivision, we have over 20 properties of 20 acres or more, some of them much larger than 20 acres, that have no conservation protection, and they're privately-owned, so they could be sold and become subdivisions. Even as of two years ago, it was our understanding that, that the state, the state allowed subdivisions by right, and we assumed that that was conventional subdivisions by right, the kind of subdivision that uses the whole parcel, spreads out across the whole parcel, it's bad for the environment, it's bad for our water resources, and it's certainly bad for climate change. We assumed that we were locked into that, but more recently, we've learned that that's not the case. State law does require that we allow subdivisions, but it doesn't specify what kind. It leaves the planning and the design of subdivisions up to the town, and in Sherburne, that means the Planning Board. So, this opens the way for us to start to solve an ongoing problem that we have here. How do we fulfill the goals of our master plan for preservation of open space, protection of groundwater, and mitigation of climate change, among other things, while still allowing some housing development, which we have to do? There are a lot of pieces to that puzzle, but one solution is to design our subdivision bylaw such that an open space subdivision, that is a subdivision that preserves most of the property as open space, is the way we do it, by right. And if you want to do a conventional sprawl subdivision, for that, you have to apply for a special permit. It basically turns our previous assumption on its head, and I think that's a very good change in our approach to this. In fact, it's a change from two years ago, which is significant, I think. So I'll just run through a few of the highlights of the bylaw. We don't have time to go through it all. You have it in your packet, and you have your little hoop sheet that I handed out. First of all, open space subdivisions are allowed by right. If you want to do a conventional one, you have to get a special permit, and the Planning Board is not going to approve a conventional subdivision, special permit or no, unless the developer can prove that the conventional subdivision is environmentally superior to open space, and that's going to be very difficult for a developer to do. So this will tilt the scale in the, toward the preservation of open space. We're also requiring that 60% of the property be conserved as open space, and that can be forest, it can be just simply for groundwater protection, it can accommodate trails, bike paths. Some towns have even used the open space for, for common grassy areas, for children to play, for picnics, for community events. Parts of it could be used for a community garden. With 60%, you can do a lot of great things with that open space. 40% of the property would be for the houses, the roads, the driveways, the lawn, all the components that reduce our ability to control carbon emissions. And the, an important component of this is that the overall layout of the subdivision is negotiated with the Planning Board. So the Planning Board actually has the authority to designate certain areas that are designated as environmentally sensitive to be open space areas, and other areas that are more appropriate for development to be the 40% for development. So we'll have some leeway there to look at the parcel as it stands and decide where we want the development to be and where we do not want it to be. The lot size and arrangement is flexible, unlike a regular subdivision that has a large minimum lot spot size in this town. The lot size may be smaller. It may not be a lot smaller, or it may be a lot smaller, depending on what the Board of Health decides the septic's should be, how the septic should be laid out. On subdivision roads, there will be a reduced frontage requirement, so if the houses wanted to be closer together, say in a small cul-de-sac cluster, they could be. As far as groundwater and wetland protection, that was the big stumbling block two years ago. So we've worked with Board of Health and CONCOM to come up with language that eases their concerns, I should say. It's not perfect in the bylaw, but we've also, as I'll refer to in a minute, we've revised our rules and regulations to strengthen that. But in the bylaw, the Planning Board has to approve the overall placement of the developed area and the open space. So that allows us to, say, place development at what we consider a safe distance from wetlands without impinging on CONCOM or Board of Health prerogatives. And another problem, two years ago, that was that it wasn't considered the, that the abutter protection or the protection of scenic views was sufficient. We don't want to ruin our rural environment, and we don't want to ruin it for our butters. So we've increased the road and setback requirements on existing roads, and we still have the same fairly large frontage requirements on existing roads. So that's what we've done with this new version, and we've been working at it for a long time. I think we've tried to foresee all the possible loopholes and closed them. I should remind you that the zoning bylaws don't control everything by any means. They control uses of land, the type of house, dimensions, size of lots, frontage and setbacks, and special permits. But much of what happens in design of a subdivision actually is controlled by the Planning Board rules and regulations. So we went back and over the last three or four months, have redesigned our subdivision rules and regulations that govern the overall site design and building design requirements, infrastructure standards, environmental data and analysis standards, and most importantly, the rules and regs actually define the process whereby a subdivision is approved. And I didn't bring copies, because the subdivision rules and regs alone are over 50 pages long. So even if it's by right, there are still tremendous amounts of control involved. So, the last thing I want to mention is that we committed ourselves as a Planning Board to look at every decision we made, we make, through the different lenses that we've expressed really in the master plan. We want to keep our open space and rural environment, there's that lens. We need to provide housing, that's another lens, the built environment. The third one is the financial implications for the town, and that, I think, is equally important. So to try to address that, I took an existing subdivision in town. George, I picked yours.
It's Addy's, too.
It's Addy's, too. This is, this is a lovely subdivision in a two-acre zone. It has no direct access to open space. In fact, it abuts a lot of environmentally sensitive areas. There's a large wetland on one end, there is- There is protected state habitat for endangered species all around the other end. But this subdivision, nice as it was, was laid out in the usual conventional subdivision's style, with two acres covering the whole area. And it turns out, there's 39 houses in there. So I tried to see, you know, what would the tax revenue be like if that had been an open space subdivision, and the houses were confined to 40% of the land? Now, it's over 100 acres, just over, so 40% of the land is about 40 acres. So the same 39 houses could have fit on the upland area, kind of near the road. On one acre or less, almost one acre lots, with a very nice, compact arrangement, and over 60 acres of open space owned collectively by the group, by the homeowners, or transferred to the town. Either way, it would be open space, permanently protected. So if there were houses, if your neighborhood, George, had one acre houses instead of two, what would the valuation have been? For a comparison, I took the Ivy Lane neighborhood, also a very nice subdivision, one acre lots. And the comparison is this, for like, I took a subset of the homes, around 19 or 20 of the homes in both subdivisions. On Parks Drive, the average valuation is just under $800,000, $794,000. On Ivy Lane, the average valuation is $806,000, very small difference. So what would it be if Parks Drive had been a hypothetical open space subdivision with one acre or less lots? Let's assume that with 60 acres of shared open space, the prices would have been pretty good, I would think. The current subdivision has no open space. So if we presume that the prices would not be a lot lower than the one acre subdivision, basically, it's a wash for the town. Plus, you have 60 acres of open space that the assessor can assess at $25,000 an acre to the homeowner association. So with an open space subdivision, the town might have come out ahead. In any case, the point is, of course, this is all just hypothetical, but the point is that, as far as I can see, it's likely not to be a tax loss for the town, tax neutral at best. So for that reason, I'm hoping that you agree that this is worth passing at this point. You can ask whether a developer would want to do this.
Go ahead. I wanted you to finish. I thought you were done. I'm sorry.
No, can I have one more minute?
Yeah, yeah, please.
The infrastructure costs would be less, less roads, less infrastructure. The town boards would be friendlier, and it could be marketed as an eco-friendly development with all this shared open space. The buyer might well like that lower maintenance and a lot of open space for their money, and guaranteed access permanently to that open space. For the town, well, we now have 60 acres for recharge of groundwater. We could put most of the wetlands in the 60 acres. Oh, incidentally, you couldn't make a parcel with wetlands, all the wetlands is the open space and all the uplands is developed. No, we require that 50% of the open space be uplands to make sure that it's good for use, upland use. And it would certainly help us control our climate, and it would preserve our rural atmosphere.
Thank you, Marion. If I let you finish, instead of trying to interrupt you, I was going to say, for a developer to be able to develop the same amount of homes on a much smaller parcel, that makes a lot of sense, because when you're looking at a subdivision, the cost of the road is one of the bigger, and infrastructure, the flatwork, as they say, is one of the hardest parts to get around and get done, because you're not seeing any revenue yet. The vertical construction's the easy part. It's that infrastructure part that really eats up a project.
Exactly right. I looked at the Whitney Place, and I had to put in a whole.
I mean, I like that. I know you had tried to do the cluster development before. This is, I think, a better version. I did see, I was wondering why, in the back of the room, there was that plan that was our neighborhood, and I showed you that, and I said, hey, that's my neighborhood, a different version of it. So I was wondering where that had come from.
Well, actually, I think that was from 1996.
No, that was an interesting, because, in fact, like, our neighborhood, like, across from my house, there's actually a, you can connect to the trails to the Leland Mills through, I think, part of it maybe through a piece of somebody's private property, but there is a trail there that some people use to connect back over to Mill Street.
Right, yeah, I know what you mean.
That's really the only access to any public lands. We do have the big meadow across from your house.
That's one of the biggest contiguous green areas in town, that whole area between Mill and.
That's right. And this way, if the decision on where to place the development and where to allow open space corridors or big open spaces would take into account, first, we would look at the parcel with nothing on it, and what's not only on the parcel, but around the parcel. And if we see open space, if we see trails, if we see habitat, wetland, then that's part of the decision. The continuity is important.
Okay. Marion, a quick question. Thanks for the summary of the revision. This is very helpful. Two of the bigger changes that you're proposing are to increase the amount of open space from 40 to 60%. The other piece is that, what you were just talking about, that at least half of the open space has to be uplands. The definition of uplands is not being changed. That's still, that's pretty set, and that's not changed at all.
Yes, we're not changing that. There is an official definition of uplands. It's basically kind of a negative definition. It's not.
Anything that's not federally state-protected.
Exactly.
Yeah. And unrelated to your bylaw, you mentioned 20-plus acre parcels that are in town. Is the biggest one Maple Street the largest?
No.
Because that was what, 80 acres?
That's 90 acres.
There's a big one on Farm Road, that one on the, what's the one on the end of Farm Road there, opposite the?
Well, that is the Lewis property and the Salt and Stoll property, and neither of them are permanently protected. Some of them, I'm not sure about Lewis, but Salt and Stoll is under 61A, but that's not permanent.
Right.
There's some big properties there.
And then there's the big farms down along the river, near Paul.
So another interesting, Marion and I met and went through this in detail. And so another interesting point, and you can tell me the town, is I was wondering how developers would feel about it, and I know you would have some input, but one of the towns, I think you said it was Maynard, set it up where you could do either or. And 85%, it was, you know, not by right, you could do either one by right, 85% were open space.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it makes total sense.
So it's kind of a win-win, was an interesting aspect to it, I think. Sorry, I interrupted.
Well, thank you, Marion. Something. Oh, yeah, go ahead, because then I want to move on to the next one, if we can.
So first, I want to commend you for this article. The town does need this type of program. But as I read it, I looked at it from the point of view of being a large property owner in town, and would I use it? And the answer would be no. There are some pieces of it that I would suggest making some changes to. Like, one of the things that, just to give you a flavor of it, is the prohibition on cutting of grasses. Now, if you have large open space, and I have a lot of fields and pastures, if you're not constantly trying to maintain those, you lose them. They will fill in.
The trees.
So why have that kind of restriction? And also, things like, you can't put any fences in when it's traditional on open space and farms and the rest, that you'd have split rail fences or something like that to segregate different uses, to outright prohibit any fencing. And I could go on, I mean, like, these little things that.
No, no, this is really helpful.
To suggest maybe that I send you some possible edits that would kind of loosen those things. I mean, I'm not sure why you wouldn't want the pastures to be cut, because then people can be more comfortable walking on it. You don't have ticks and poison ivy and all that kind of stuff.
Better for the grass, right.
Yeah, it helps the grass. So to say that that's prohibited, so I think there's a few little pieces here that.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I think, I would appreciate it if maybe we could sit down, and you, as a landowner with a farm, could give us that kind of point-by-point feedback, because I have to admit, that's a part of the bylaw that we haven't spent much time on. We haven't really.
So that's good. So why don't you guys talk offline, so we can keep moving on the.
Yeah.
And the piece on the mowing, I actually, the first part of that talks about maintaining it in a manner that will ensure suitability for its intended purpose. If it's a hay field, that would suggest that you can cut it, and then.
Right. I thought that was kind of the reverse loophole.
Right, and it appears to contradict some, yeah.
Right, yeah, we could make it more consistent, though. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Marion. The next, I don't know which Planning Board article, or do you guys want to do next? Do you want to do the marijuana? That one seems pretty simple. That's just a, is that just an administrative?
Yeah, do you want to begin?
You could just explain that one and make a motion to remove it.
Very simply, several years ago, when recreational marijuana was being discussed as a potential allowed use under the state, we imposed a temporary moratorium to expire in 2018. So the moratorium has expired. We now have permanent prohibitions in place, but it's still on the books. It just needs to be deleted.
So we just need to remove it. Okay, that's simple. Thank you. All right. Then you have the section 1.46, is that?
No.
Sorry, I just, that's the one of the expansion of existing buildings?
Yes. This one was suggested by the Building Commissioner for cases where someone has a non-conforming structure on a conforming lot and proposes an addition that meets all current dimensional setback requirements, all requirements of zoning in general. Or has a, even more, more to the point, has a non-conforming lot, maybe it's three quarters of an acre instead of an acre, but the house meets all the setback requirements and wants to put it in addition. Currently, because of those non-conforming, the non-conforming nature of either the lot or the building, they have to go to the ZBA for a finding that they're not increasing any nonconformities, and it's no less, no more detrimental to the neighborhood. So rather than have to go through that for something that's conforming in all ways, this would allow the building inspector to just issue the permit. Now, some discussions with ZBA, it was suggested that, well, the only thing is, what if somebody wants to, like, double the size of their house, or put a huge addition on that might be? So it was suggested that maybe there'd be a percentage increase limit, that if it's within that increase, whatever the percentage may be, then the building permit could be issued, but if it's over that, they would still have to go to ZBA. That hasn't been discussed with the Planning Board yet, but that's probably something that would be seriously considered as an amendment.
I like this, because I think this is an article that makes it a little more user-friendly in town for people to do conforming work. I think it helps our tax base, if people can expand their houses and they're within the zoning guidelines, there's no reason they should have to go through extra hoops.
I agree with George. I think it's a good step to simplify the life of our residents. This kind of thing, we should encourage.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks. And we did the, what's the inclusionary zoning? Is that the other one?
We'll start with the housing trust.
Okay, sorry. I'm just, I was.
We kind of go hand in hand, but we'll start with the housing trust, which I don't know what the article number is that's been assigned to it, but they'll probably change, these things do. So in 2019, the Housing Partnership came to town with the support from the Select Board, asking for the town to accept the state statute, the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), to establish a municipal affordable housing trust. And in that instance, we just adopted the state language, which is fairly, is lengthy. We did not print the entire state statute in the report, when it, the advisory report. We simply cited it, which basically just gives the authority, and it has some general regulations as to what a housing trust may do and who may sit on it, and the requirement that there be at least one representative from the Select Board. In the fall, as we were working on, we, the Housing Partnership, in conjunction with the Planning Board members and several other members in town with kind of expertise, got together to create a working group to work on the declaration of trust and the language for the Affordable Housing Trust bylaw. And we worked with consultant Jennifer Golson, who we worked with for creating the housing production plan in 2016, 2017. And in the process of, basically, it came out, in fleshing out details, it came out that there was some concern of wanting to have more, greater oversight by the Select Board on authorization of used funds. The, in 2019, there was no funding for this housing trust. We were just creating an entity for possible future funding in the same instance. This year, we are not asking for funding again. We are simply asking town to adopt the, it's essentially amending, but we will have to present the entire language, and we're asking town to adopt this Affordable Housing Trust bylaw. And it will create a new general bylaw for the town. And so it's going to look lengthy, but the long and the short of it is, is there's three major changes, and there's three instances where we've inserted the language with Select Board approval. So it's not changing a whole lot. It's adopted the state statute. We've clarified, we've spelled out who will sit on this housing trust, to be five to seven members. It's a Select Board member. And then we left it somewhat open, because we think as times change, it's two-year terms for this, and depending on where we are at in our town and as far as affordable housing, our needs are going to change as far as whether we need someone with more development experience on a housing trust, or if we need someone with more fundraising, who knows where we're going to be. So we didn't want to make it too specific and lock ourselves in with the language of the bylaw.
So I support this. I think it makes sense. In my other communities, they have things like this. It prevents conflict within the town where you have better coordination. I think it's pretty straightforward. And the only thing that I speculated about is that you have a five-to-seven-member committee, and you designated one select person and designated two others, leaving four unspecified. And I understand you're saying the needs might change, but essentially, they're citizens at large, is what you're contemplating. It could be anybody who are citizens of the town. The other four members.
Correct. These citizens could be anyone, but they are appointed by the Select Board. So there's a, we'd appoint whoever would come forward, like any position open in our town. They would be, submit an application, there'd be a review process, there's their qualities, and do they fit what the needs are for the trust? And also, we are a small town. We didn't want to be so limiting that we limited our pool, because at the end of the day, if someone's. if someone's committed to the intent, there's, right now, there's no funding in it, so, it's, it's really all about having, making sure we can have a quorum of membership, and that they're, as long as their interests are in the right place, and that we do have the expertise that we, that would be needed to make sure that whatever goals were met for maintaining the, you know, handling the trust in accordance with the bylaw.
And just to clarify, it's not four, five to seven members, it's five or seven. It maintains the odd number on the board, so, you have the four identified positions. It would be an additional one or three at large, but it's not, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't approve a six-member board. It approves a five or a seven.
Right, it would need to be, yes. Correct. So, it's either five or it's seven. As it is with the Housing Partnership, you know, if it's, if things are pretty quiet, it's sometimes hard to get enough members to be interested, so-
I think even when things are quiet. I mean, we do have a small town with a limited pool of volunteers, so, it's-
I think this is a great article, too. I was just going to suggest, maybe, a bulletize, like, the PowerPoint, two or three slides would be good, because this is four and a half pages of text. It might be good just to have, what are the key issues that were contained in the text?
But the article's only one page.
Not what I'm reading. In here, in the warrant. In the warrant. Yeah, but the warrant has-
It has the full-
Full amount. Right, I'm looking at the warrant.
So, that's been, it was, in an attempt to clarify, to make it simplified, we, we did have some questions for town council of what we need to be printing, and we have a summary that just shows which sections we amended, but we will be including the entire language.
Actually, Jeanie would be a big fan if you cut pages out of the warrant.
I would love to, believe me. I would love to, but it's been suggested that-
No, no, but, look at the warrant that I presented to you tonight. The warrant is-
Yeah, the issue is always going to be, you only show the changes, and somebody's going to say, "I'd like to see the whole article."
This is the warrant, yeah.
If you don't have things out of meetings, Paul, if things change two days before, then we're-
We can post, advisory can say that the, in their report, the staff will get mail to the town. So, they can see that the full, the full warrant article is online in the posted town warrant. Because that's not a big deal. It's more the advisory can have to go out to 17 hundred households.
Yeah, I'm not actually concerned about the warrant. I'm just saying, if we're going to do a presentation in an all-town meeting, if you just had two or three slides with bullets on it, saying, you know, it's going to create a board, it's going to be funded this way, it would probably make the discussion go better, that's all.
I think it sounds like a good plan, unless there's something that someone, someone can come to me offline, and we can figure out exactly what gets printed. But I think as long as the entire bylaw is available for review, but-
We just do whatever Jeanie tells us to do.
Yeah. I wasn't proposing to change the printing, I was just proposing the presentation.
Right, the presentation, absolutely. Keep it simple. So, it, so, the housing trust, as we explained last year, 2019, creates a place to hold funds for affordable housing creation. We're not asking town to fund it, but it does segue into something that the planning board is working on, which is, and coming to town for inclusionary zoning bylaw. So, I don't know.
Okay, so, the inclusionary, thank you, Addie.
How did you know it was me? I have a call-
I don't know what connections you have, because Daryl was in here earlier, saying how hard it is to get masks, so-
I'm married to an emergency room nurse who's watching. I'm wearing it. So, so, so where does the money come from to go into a trust? And, and how do we, as we make progress with our Housing Production Plan, adding affordable housing, as we make progress, this, the, the next article, this article on affordable housing will help us get there. It's, it's 4.9, the Affordable Housing article, but it's, you can read all about it in the town, in the state website about inclusionary zoning is another term. But, so, so, this, this, this bylaw guides the town and tells developers what kind of affordable housing, what kind of housing we want. It says it's, it has to be something that complies with our subsidized housing inventory, the Department of Housing and Community Development requirements. It's a way for housing to be developed in Sherburne that meets the needs of, of low and moderate income, and, and, and it, so, creates housing units. Another very important aspect is, once, as we add, and we get into Safe Harbor, as we get to our 10% goal in the Housing Production Plan, this, this article provides the means for the town to stay, to keep pace with the market rate units that get developed in town, so that we stay at 10%. As was mentioned, if, if we have a project that happens, and we get to 10%, this will keep us there forever. That's really the goal of this article. So, and its applicability, we simplified it. We've had a couple of attempts at having a hearing on this, and we've been waylaid by posting issues. So, but, we've had people show up for the, the initiation of those, of the hearings on all these articles, and had very good discussions. So, I'll just point out a couple of things that have come up. This is broken up into the purpose and intent, the applicability, and then, the mandatory types of affordable housing units onsite or off-site, or payment in lieu of. And that payment in lieu of is what we're talking about, is a, is a significant source of funding to the trust. So, and then, and then, where the housing units can be, the location, the rules and regulations, not the rules and regulations, but the bylaw defines the purchase and rental prices, and, and then, and the timing. So, those are the basic parts of the, of the article. In the applicability, we start out talking about any subdivision, and then, we decided, as a result of some great conversation in a planning board meeting, that we can simplify it down. So, in, in 4.9b applicability, in 1a, it says, "Any subdivision development of two or more", and we just want to simplify it down and say residential units. So, that's, it says, "Or more detached, single-family homes", and then, it goes on to define more types of homes. So, really, we're combining A and B, so, open space subdivision development approved under Section 4.5 of this zoning law. We, again, simplifying it down and just, just making it, I think, more clear. Those are some, a couple of changes under applicability. So, the idea is, really, anything that gets developed where there's market rate units, we want to keep pace with that with affordable units, so that's defining where it's applicable. So, it's any residential units. And then, and then, the mandatory requirements are, if, if there's a development of, of market rate units, if the project is one to five units, then there's zero units required to be built. But, there's a payment in lieu of option for one to five units. And then, after that, six to twelve, thirteen to seventeen units, eighteen to twenty, it's fifteen percent affordable. And then, over twenty, twenty-one and over units, it jumps to 20% affordable. So, and the units can be built onsite, and they have to, we've also simplified onsite description under, so, D1a says onsite affordable units shall be, and we just simplified that down, and shall be in accordance with DHCD Local Initiative Program requirements. So, instead of trying to define aspects, like, location, they have to be distributed within the development, the unit type and size and number of bedrooms, we simplified it down for some good reason. Really, the DHCD requirements are that it has to, it has to have the same external appearance, has to be, in terms of the infrastructure, which affects operating costs, like insulation and plumbing and things like that, they all have to be the same, market and affordable. But they don't have to be the same in terms of size. So, if, if, if there's a development with five or six-bedroom houses, that makes the operation and maintenance of that, of an affordable unit expensive. And so, it's one thing to make the purchase price affordable, but we also want to enable housing development that's affordable in Sherburne, that qualifies for SHI, but it's also affordable in terms of operations. So, size is not always, in a community where there's a lot of large houses, and there's demand for some large houses, we don't want to force affordable housing to be large, and therefore, more expensive. So, so, it's, it's allowed by DHCD to make the same quality in terms of its build and external appearance, but allow the size to be smaller. So, by simplifying that, that down for onsite units within a development, to just say onsite affordable units shall be in accordance with the DHCD Local Initiative Program requirements. But that simplifies it and keeps it clear.
John, is that consistent with 40B? I thought for 40DSHI calculations, the affordable units had to be roughly similar in size as the market rate units. And I, that's probably a mistake on my part.
Well, I don't know all the, all the details in, for, for different types of 40Bs, but I can say that, I can say that the inclusionary zoning allows for off-site. It allows for, instead of payment, you can make a payment, and that money can be used to go purchase an apartment someplace else, or purchase a, a house someplace else, or rehab a house, or other, it allows a lot of other options that aren't related to size. Then, off-site units, same thing as I just mentioned, it can be, we can, it can be rehab, it can build something new. It allows, this allows all those different options. And then, in terms of the payment in lieu of, there's a formula that says, that says you look at the, the market rate units, the, the, the medium sale price for a market rate unit versus the affordable price that, that complies with the state, that's really set by the state formula. And that's going to, and, and that, that becomes the, the number for, that's used to determine the payment. And then, the discussion we had, we've had, actually, for a long time, we've had this discussion about how, is that formula designed to bias the developer to build on their own development or to make a payment? And typically, developers choose to make the payment, but typically, the municipalities that have longer experience using inclusionary zoning are larger communities, and their, their situation is different than ours. So, so, for us, we want the formula that's simple, which is what we've got here. One of the big things the developer asks for is, just tell me what the rules are. Tell me what the game is, and, and that's, just make it simple. So, we've got a formula that is simple. The, the formula that is in this article, I can give examples, that's not printed, we can amend it and add it. But it's, it's for, for, just as an example, for a development with, with five units, where the market rate is $850,000, and the affordable is $250,000, then the payment in lieu of is $450,000, that's $90,000 per unit. At 15% of the, of the housing units would have to be affordable. That's how this works. There was discussion, as we looked at different examples of this, that that, that's pretty high. And so, that says, really drive the developer to, to either rehab off-site or to somehow provide it themselves, rather than make a payment. And maybe that's okay. I mean, our goal is affordable housing.
I have a comment on that. I have, a bunch of towns I represent have inclusionary zoning. So, first, let me say, great idea, great bylaw. We need it. This is very useful. Commend the planning board.
No, this call's getting worse. Why don't we just stop right there? That's all I wanted to hear.
The problem I have is that the, the payments are not enough to actually do anything. So, you have an example here, you get $250,000. You cannot build an affordable unit for $250,000. If you figure out you have to acquire land, you have to build a building, you need, to replace a unit that's not being built, affordable unit, you need something that's more like 800, 900, or a million dollars, and not 250,000. So, I'm thinking this is too low. You're looking at from the point of view of, what will drive a developer to do? But the actual cost of acquiring land elsewhere in the town, for the town to do it. So, we get $250,000, and the housing, Affordable Housing Trust is saying, wow, we got $250,000, let's go provide some affordable housing. You can't even buy a lot of land in Sherburne for $250,000, let alone build anything.
Yeah. Let me, let me just clarify one thing. I, your point is well-taken, and that's consistent with the discussions we've had. I just want to clarify that, in this formula, that's in the, in the warrant article, A is the, A is the price, that's the DHC determined sale price. So, the $250,000 I mentioned is the sale price, that's the afford, that's the price for the affordable unit. That's the revenue you get by selling an affordable unit, or that's what you charge somebody to buy, to, that's what you sell it for. But, so, your point is, in my example, where there's five houses at $850,000, the developer would have to pay $450,000. It's still not the price of a, of a new house.
So, what I'm suggesting is, particularly for six or more units, that the, if the developer chooses not to build an affordable housing, it's the cost of building the unit that he should pay, rather than saying, he's not going to build it at all. So, in other words-
So, we'll, we'll put this in the example, so that we can really look at it. But just, in that case, if it's seven units, I happen to have this, at $850,000, then, the, the payment is, the developer would have to pay to build those seven, is $630,000. We're getting closer. $630,000, that's what this formula would, would require the developer to pay. And for him, he's, that's going to cost him $90,000 per house unit that he builds. It's a pretty significant fee, cost of building. So, so, you know, that's out of a five-and-a-half-million-dollar development. It's going to cost him $630,000. It's a pretty high fee. So, so, my, what we've done is, we've created this formula in the, in the, we've, a few more meetings before we'll come back, we have a, our, our formal public hearing on this. We'll include a table with this, it will look like that, it'll be inserted, so you can see these examples. But there's other ways that we can still easily change the formula and base it on the percent affordable, or the, or the percent payment. One of the, another issue that's related, related to this is, in the formula you're looking at, it's, it's 15% up to 20 units, and then, 21 and over, it's, it goes to 20%. And that does create a possibility, a developer could, could try to get around going to 20% by splitting his development up into two. This, again, this was brought up at our planning board meeting, where this would allow that. There's reasons, there's financial reasons against doing that for a developer. It means going through another development process, submitting for the, going through the approval process, all that kind of stuff. And we could also stick on a requirement to say that you can't build another budding adjacent development for a period of years, like, three years or something, that would probably prevent people going around that.
John, what, I guess, we talked about this when we were talking to the building inspector in budget times, like, I assume there's precedent in other towns as to how they calculate how much money is put into the housing trust in lieu of affordable housing. Is this on- Is this on track with what other towns are doing?
Yeah, the examples vary a great deal. A denser community uses a smaller contribution, but their housing is very different.
Right.
It's actually in some, yeah, so that's, in another, like in, out towards the Cape, some, like Barnstable, it's, they're using this as a tool to really drive conversion, there's motels, they're converting to affordable housing and things like that. So they're really pushing this as a way to not just keep even or keep pace, but also create, they're using this as a tool to get to 10%, so it's even more onerous in terms of housing development.
Okay.
So it's a range.
All right.
It really, I think what's important is to make sure it fits us, so...
Do we have any other questions? I just want to keep moving, we've got a long agenda tonight, so I just...
My only concern with this one, this is going to be one we could get bogged down in town meeting really quickly, so I just worried that...
Not a planning board, never.
I'm worried that, you know...
Why do you think I'm wearing a mask?
Yeah, I know, I know.
But I try to encourage people to move John away.
It's just could easily bog things down, so I think...
I think examples will help.
Yeah.
That was clear from...
Well, I'm just worried that if you still have to meet a couple of times to nail down some of the final language, too.
I don't, I think the final language is very, it's, the final language is what we talked about at our last meeting, so I think it's...
I was at that meeting, too, yeah, so I know the discussion. Okay, I'm just worried that this could...
But I think examples are the, will help.
It is, it is not simple.
No, that's the problem, and Mary will only give you five minutes of slides, whatever she gives you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Feel better. Heidi.
Could you leave with Sean?
Good evening, Heidi Doyle, Town Treasurer. For tonight, for what's on the agenda is, the first one was on the bonds.
I think you need to get just a hair closer to the microphone.
I don't want to get too close now.
You had a mask on.
So the first one is on the bond premium language that has been in the last town meetings. I actually don't really know why we still do this, and I'm kind of curious, because I read it and it keeps talking about the town's prior votes. Well, if you've done that for one town meeting, why are we still saying that? So I've actually asked Town Council, do we still need to keep putting this in? Haven't gotten an answer back yet. Danny, Paul, if you know why, because when we do a capital vote for each item later, we're reading the same language on every single capital item.
Then you don't need it.
That was my sense of advisory, didn't make sense.
Yeah, it's redundant.
Yes, so I put it here because it's been done before, but I'm kind of like to say...
Would this, if we did this, would it clean up the capital articles so you don't have to say it over and over again? Or would you rather say it in every capital article?
I think we should say in every capital article.
Okay.
But do you have any preference, Paul? I mean, have you seen...
When you do the borrowing authorization, you want to have that language in there.
Okay.
For each article.
For each article, yeah.
Because it gets voted on, so this is just a...
It gets voted on, too.
I think it is, and I haven't heard back from Darren, but my feeling right now is to eliminate that and keep it in the capital articles.
Okay. That makes sense. Does that make sense to you, Paul?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a quick one. The next one I have down is for OPEB. Basically, what came up in one of, one of the audits was that our current OPEB vote was under the Pre-Modernization Act, and there was never a declaration of trust filed. So in 2016, there has been a new version of the OPEB, and trying to look at it, and actually just this afternoon, I attended another meeting on OPEB, which was trying to make me question of whether we should do it, but I think that we should adopt the new Modernization Act one. It actually is, has a few more regulations required. We'd have to have a declaration of trust, it would state that the treasurer would be the custodian, because otherwise you'd have to have a committee appointed, and hearing what everyone's saying, it's probably not a good idea to have another committee right now. And then we'd have reporting requirements, which we already have right now through our, on the financial side, that come in anyway, and that seems to be the biggest difference. So I think it actually gives a little more transparency if we vote the new ones, so the language I proposed is to adopt the new one, and then we'll go ahead with the declaration of trust.
I think just as speaking as a lawyer, it makes sense, and I commend you for bringing it forward. This is essentially a housekeeping thing.
Yep.
It's not a substantive change to local, prolonged town meeting.
Do you want to actually add that to the first ten? I mean, add it right after the five, which is adopting the prudent investor standard for library trusts? Do you want to make the six? I mean, they're, I'm not sure this merits a lot of discussion.
I don't think it does either, because I'm asking for prudent investor standard on here, I feel it does link with that. It should be just a review, a brief vote, it is housekeeping.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense to me.
Mary may have a different view, I don't know.
What's that?
Can you repeat that, because I don't...
The thought was to add this as warrant article seven, that it's so routine, it's administrative, unless Mary has a different view, I don't think this requires a discussion. Adopting the prudent investor rule pursuant to state laws should not be controversial.
Right.
No.
I think so.
What do you think, Mr. Energy Committee?
Either way, I, because we usually vote, this is the block sometimes, the first seven, so I don't know that...
If she did a consent agenda...
I'm applying either way, I guess I'd say, I think it's good, you're right to simplify it.
Yeah, I need a two-thirds vote on that.
You had a two-thirds vote on that.
You had a two-thirds vote.
Georgia, you saying that you don't want them to come in at the next meeting, the library trust?
What do you mean?
I think you're for Mary Wolf.
I'm Mary Wolf.
Oh, Mary Wolf, okay.
I'm not Mary.
Actually, I'm watching your opinion there.
Okay, no, we're just saying moving it to a different part of the warrant.
Moving it up.
With kind of the administrative articles up in the beginning of the warrant.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
So as long as we have a two-thirds vote, because it's a trust.
Exactly, that's about it.
Part of the consent vote.
And then I do have, if you open the warrant, I have two other issues that have come up that I'd love to go, do you want me to just quickly say what I'm looking for?
Do you want to wait, when we open the warrant and talk about them then?
Wait, yep.
Okay, why don't we do that? And then we can, I know some people have been waiting a long time to do their...
It's some more housekeeping issues for the most part.
Nancy, you're next.
This is another no-brainer.
This, to me, seems like another housekeeping thing. The article basically allows the collector to send one bill for any amount that does not exceed $100. Now, in 1986, we adopted chapter 59, 57A, which allowed, they capped it at $25. And then, in their wisdom, the legislature amended it to $50, but instead of amending A, they created B. So we adopted the original one in 1986, and then when they created the 57B, we revoked our vote on A and adopted B at the higher level. And once again, the municipal modernization bill changed it and made it cap at $100, and they repealed 57B and said anybody who adopted 57A could go forward with this without doing another vote. But of course, we had revoked our vote on 57A. This also extends to quarterly billing, which the original one did not do, which will be helpful, because if you have a $100 bill, you won't have to send out four different bills for it. So basically, that's it in a nutshell, and I've given you some supporting things that shows you the literature on it, so...
Great. Thank you for bringing this up. I think it's, again, a housekeeping thing like Heidi's was, and...
Yep. It's a no-brainer.
That's what I thought. And since it was so quick and everything, can I do a little pitch on my mailing of this?
Sure. It's been a long, we should have been a lot of things to get through.
I know. Well, our first commitment in 2020 of excise bills went out, and not everybody will be in it, but if you haven't done anything to your car, usually you're in that first one, that's over 4,000 bills. And it is what we call a stuffer, and it's blue, so it reminds you of farm pond, because on one side it has an application for your sticker for farm pond or transfer station. Of course, a transfer station, if that's all you want, has no charge. But there's several ways to get your sticker, and we encourage the online, that you can pay going through the town website. But if you mail in your application, if, it would be really great if you'd mail them with the payment for your excise tax bill, because we have to verify the plates. And if you send them separately, it means we have to go to the computer for each one of the plates, so I would encourage that. And I would remind people that we're in burn permit season until the first of May, and that also can be done, actually, basically has to be done online, because...
It's actually easy to do that online, because rather than, when you used to have to call in, which is easier.
Well, the good thing about it is, when you put that information in, it hits both the police and the fire and us all at once. And if you come down and are just bashful about walking through, we'll bring you in and walk you through, because it's just so much easier. Otherwise, you've got to give us the money, then you've got to go to the fire station with your application on it, so...
Can you get the senior farm pond sticker on there?
No, because there's no money attached to that. Your senior sticker is for nothing, so...
So you have to walk in to do that.
Or, yeah, or mail it. You can mail it.
You're going to take a swim test, though.
All right, thank you, Nancy. Next, we have the Energy Committee.
You have a presentation now. Speed it up as fast as possible.
Thank you.
I know it's getting on. So let me hook this in, and hopefully it just comes right up.
If it does, it'll be a miracle, because that's never happened.
I know, I know.
Watch this.
You know, advisory, a lot of...
It's a good night for miracles.
Oh, yeah.
So they didn't have to mess with it.
Okay. You up and running? Cool. It's warming up. Okay, well, I'll start anyway, and then we can catch up, because the first was just a welcome slide, if you will. Fred Cunningham, 58 Everett Street, and also a member of the Sherburne Energy Committee who I'm representing this evening. This evening, the Energy Committee would like to provide you the select board with the background on a town meeting article for electrical aggregation, and we'll describe what that means. But the article would provide the select board with permission, and that's important, to investigate aggregation for the town, but in no way does it absolutely obligate the town to contract for aggregation. This is an article to allow the select board to begin the process of aggregation. If the process, in fact, was voted in, it would actually take one or two years to negotiate through to a contract. And then, and that process can be halted at any time if we decide that this is not meeting the demands and the needs of Sherburne. What we'll cover tonight briefly is what is community choice aggregation, what are the benefits? Are we having trouble here? There we go. What are the benefits? How is it structured? What's the process? And lastly, just what are some of the neighboring towns and towns in similar size to ours that have community choice aggregation? So what is aggregation? Aggregation, community choice aggregation, sometimes called municipal aggregation, is a program where the town, the local government, can procure power on behalf of the residents, the commercial interests in town, and the municipal interests as well. And it is about getting the supply of electricity, because the actual transmission and distribution of electricity stays with the utility, ever source. So it splits into two pieces. By aggregating demand, communities have an opportunity to negotiate and leverage the town's load to get better rates and competitive, from competitive suppliers, and to choose what kind of options we want in terms of greener power sources. The 1997 law in Massachusetts separated the generation and supply of electricity from the distribution and delivery of that electricity. So at that point, residents and businesses could go out and find a different supplier. They could choose 100% renewable supplier, 50%, whatever they want, basically. It freed up the two parts of supply and distribution. So if they did nothing, their existing utility just continues to provide their power supply. So what changes with aggregation? As I said a moment ago, the only thing that changes with aggregation is the supply of the electricity, not the distribution of it. So what does that mean? Well, in our current situation, utility, ever source, finds a source of power, which is typically a mix of fossil fuels and a percentage of renewable resources, and then they deliver that power to the consumer. By law, they have to provide 16% of renewable energy in 2020. It was 14 in 2019, and it goes up 2% every year till 2035. So what's different? What's different is, again, on the supply side, that with a CCA, a Community Choice Aggregation, that it can contain significantly more renewable energy, up to even 100% for customers who want that, and we dropped that again somehow? Uh-oh.
It's on the screen over there.
Oh, good. Well, good luck reading that. For those of you who don't have the presentation, you're going to have a hard time reading that one. But we'll see if we can get it back up on the main screen.
But that's being broadcast, townwide.
Good, good. So you can always review it.
Keep phoning in questions.
So on the right-hand side of that graphic, ah, no, then we're back. On the right-hand side of that graphic, what it's really pointing to is that you can increase renewables significantly through this process. Okay, I'll just kind of keep going and...
Yeah, just keep going.
We've got the slides. You can increase renewables through the process, you can even go up to as much as 100% renewables, but it's important to understand that the consumer will have a choice, mix of renewable energy or, you know, primarily fossil, non-renewable options, so that the idea of aggregation is to give people choice. I can choose the basic service at 14% for 2019, 16% for 2020, I can choose 100% renewables, or I can choose what the town has negotiated between the two. Good? All right, cool. So that's that. Now, there are over 140 towns in Massachusetts that have CCAs, going back to 1997 when the law was passed. The earlier contracts were primarily put in place for price stability and cost. Over the last number of years, there's been an additional consideration, which is that of renewables. So recently, not just for competitive pricing and stability, CCAs have been used as a way to reduce emissions from burning fossil fuels to generate electricity. There are several benefits to the CCA, and I'll go through these pretty quickly. First of all, obviously, renewable energy production increases and emissions decrease. Secondly, the consumer has a lot of choice, and these offerings are vetted. This is a state law that sets up the process, so the vetting is done before we even, you know, we don't spend a lot of time trying to vet the process, it's a process that's organized by law. Residents can avoid the challenge of trying to find their own supplier, which I will tell you personally, is a challenge. CCA is well-regulated, and it's overseen by the Department of Energy Resources and the Department of Public Utilities. It's well-managed, creates basically a seamless transition and program management, and this is important, at no cost to the town, and I'll discuss that in a moment. Obviously, another advantage is the possibility of lower electricity prices. Another advantage is that there's minimal municipal staff support required, and the reason for that is, the way these things are set up is, there's a consultant, or you'd call it a energy broker, who does all the negotiation with the suppliers and the town, plans, all the planning, all the implementation of that plan, and all the ongoing operation of the plan, all at no cost to the town. So there's minimal need for municipal staff to be involved at all. And lastly, the very original reason for this is stability and competitive rates. By negotiating longer-term contracts and aggregating the supply, in contrast to the utilities' basic service rates, which change every month, you get a two-, three-year contract where I know what my price is going to be over the course of that entire contract. Now, it is important to understand that rates are competitive, and on average are lower than the utilities' basic prices. But ever source basic service rates usually rise in the six-month winter period and lower in the six-month summer period, so they're reviewed every six months and can change, whereas the stability of the aggregated agreement doesn't change. Overall, CCA basic rates, however, have typically averaged at less than the basic ever source rate over the life of the contract. Of course, savings can't be guaranteed, but that's the experience other towns have had. So how is it structured? Well, first of all, by law, anyone who does not want to participate in the CCA can opt out at any time... out at any time with no penalty, and that's important. So I can move between tiers of the CCA, or I could just move right out and back to Eversource's basic service, but there's no penalty for doing it. Typically, they're structured. These CCAs are structured in tiers so that I can choose the level of participation I want to get involved in. So I can opt out of the CCA entirely, return right back to Eversource's basic service if I want to. I can also opt out of the middle tier, and I'll describe why you'd have to opt out of that in a moment, and move to the basic CCA tier. A basic CCA tier is a mirror of what Eversource offers, but because of aggregation, the cost is lower than Eversource's basic cost. We'll look at that in a moment. The middle tier, which is some level of negotiated renewable resource. Different towns have decided to do different levels of resource over the 16% required by law, but this middle tier is a tier that all people in town would be automatically enrolled in, with one exception, and we'll talk about in a moment. But it contains some level of negotiated energy sources at a potentially lower price. What towns have typically been doing is looking at how much renewable can we add and still stay just below the basic service cost from Eversource. So you can gain renewables and still be paying less. But some towns have decided to go over the cost of the basic service. The one exception is any customer already enrolled with an alternative supplier, such as myself, is not automatically enrolled in the middle tier. They would have to opt in. And the last tier of these programs generally is to offer 100% renewable. That obviously will cost a bit more than the basic price from Eversource. So an energy broker consultant typically handles all the rate negotiations and all how much renewable resources should be in their negotiations, and they negotiate all that, they implement and operate the program, and their fee is paid by the energy supplier, not the town. Okay, so. This one's going to be a little tough to see. Actually, it's really tough to see because it's not going out. There it is. You can see it on yours, and I apologize to everybody else that we can't see this. What we're looking at here is just a sampling of towns in the area. Some of these towns have less renewable energy in their standard option, and others have more. But you can see the three tiers I'm talking about. The standard option, which is the default one that everybody's enrolled in, of these six towns acted, decided in 2019, when it was 14% required by law, to go to 24%, whereas Lexington decided 16, New England decided 100, New England decided 60. What's useful to look at here is the averages in the highlighted area. If you look at the standard option, the average of the towns that we looked at was 46% renewable, and Eversource offers 14% renewable. So Eversource's basic offering of 14% renewable, the averages of renewables for the other towns are 46. So look at the cost. Because of aggregation, the cost for an average of 32% more renewables in the supply mix is less than the cost of Eversource's basic price. That was the balance I was talking about a moment ago. And it's actually a little over a penny less per kilowatt hour. If we then start looking at the premium option, which in all cases is going to be 100% renewable every town does it that way, then you've got 100% renewable over 14% of Eversource in 2019. And you can see that even though I get 86% more renewables in my mix, I'm only paying, I'm paying less than half a penny per kilowatt hour more. So even with all that extra renewables, it's not a, and besides which, if I don't want to enroll in that, I don't. And then if we look at the basic option, which is a mirror of 14%, you actually are saving one and almost one and a third, 1.31 cents per kilowatt hour over the basic option from Eversource, which is why we believe most people will use the basic option in the CCA because they're saving money for the exact same service. Now, these costs are for the supply. It's not for the distribution, as you know, in your job. Those are two different costs, and Eversource's distribution cost could stay the same regardless of whether we have CCA or not. Okay, moving along. What's the process? This is a regulated process, so it's dependable, and it's by law. The first move is what we're talking about tonight, to get an article on a town meeting warrant that authorizes the Select Board to pursue aggregation. It's important to understand that doesn't mean that we are obligated in any way to actually contract. This is getting all the information, setting it up, getting it approved by DOR, and then if we actually sign a contract at the end of that whole process, then yeah, the town is under contract. The second step is to prepare an aggregation plan. It's done with the Department of Energy Resources and the Department of Public Utilities and is managed by the energy broker that the town would use as their consultant for this whole process. Next step is, of course, citizen review. So whatever plan the group comes up with would then go to the citizens for review, potential revision. And once that's done, then we finally get around to submitting that plan to the DPU and DOR for review and approval. And I just have to say that this is the lengthiest part of the process right here. Approval by DOR and DPU takes between a few months and a year, depending on a backlog of applications. Right now, it's about 12 months. So the whole process, from soup to nuts, can take up to two years, depending on DPU. And lastly, is the initiation, which is community outreach, education, and then enrolling through a plan launch and allowing people to opt. People can actually opt out of the program before it's actually launched. They can just say, "I don't even want to play here," or they can do it at any other time later. In this area, Colonial Power Group, who we've talked to, Mass Power Choice and Good Energy seem to be the primary consultant groups that assist towns in creating aggregation plan and in navigating the process through to contract and management after contract. At any point in the process, and just repeat this, the town can decide to withdraw from the process if the negotiated options just don't meet our needs. The town, after signing a contract, is obligated to offer aggregation, but again, no consumer at any time is obligated individually to enroll. So quickly, what other towns in the area? Like I said before, there are 140 municipalities in Massachusetts who have CCAs. Our neighbors, our budding towns, Holliston, Natick, and Ashland have them in place already. Millis is preparing to launch. They're in the prepare-to-launch phase. But those towns aren't necessarily mirrors of Sherburne. So other towns, Harvard, Arlile, Orange, more about our size, have CCAs. Other towns, Sharon, Walpole, Westboro, Grafton, Lincoln, all generally about the size of Sherburne, also have CCAs. So what we're asking residents to do, and hopefully if it gets on the warrant with your approval, we'll ask them to say yes to enable you to investigate aggregation. Again, the vote doesn't require that we actually contract for community choice aggregation, although it is important to understand that if the article's passed, the town does not have to go back to town meeting to actually implement a contract. And of course, the public will have a chance to review. We have, at the end of your packets, added a series of slides which are facts. I'm not going to go through those by any means.
If we could move on to the questions, that'd be good because.
So the only thing I'd say to the audience is if you're interested in getting this presentation on the facts, give me your email. I'll get it out to you tonight.
Okay. We're going to start with questions up here, Marion, and then we'll get to you. But go ahead, Chuck.
Fred, this looks terrific. The, I think my 100% renewables cheaper than the Eversource basic price now, but.
Tell me which supplier. I gotta switch.
It's only, it's only good for three months. It changes every three months. The MAPC summary that you attached to our packet, on page four suggests that the CCA authorization can come either at a town meeting or a city council meeting. My question is, can we just adopt it? We may want to for educational purposes. The MAPC talks about political fallout because it's an opt-out, not an opt-in, that this may be a good educational opportunity. And I think Councilor Durensis just told me that no, the city council, the Select Board can't opt for it.
And cities, a city council is the equivalent of town meeting. That's the legislative body. It has to be adopted by legislation. So it's just a legal question. Sorry to.
No.
Jump into town counseling, and I've worked on these in other communities.
I mean, I think we should do it, even if we could, I think for educational purposes. We will do it in educational. It makes sense to do it at a town meeting. And that's very important, anyway, because if you go through to the point where you're actually about to launch the plan, you have to tell people what it is, how to opt out, which should be very easy. It's online or a phone call. You have to tell them what the rates are and tell them how it all works. George?
Go ahead.
So I'm in support of this, and I want to say for the voters who are listening and who might be at a town meeting, that this is for you. This is action that we can take here that would mean that you all pay less money every month when you're sitting down and you're writing out your bills and you get to your utility bills. This is an effort by your town leadership and your Energy Committee to make it cheaper for those of us who live in this town. I want to, it's hard to emphasize that enough, that my experience with these and other towns is that it does save money. It also lets you do the good thing of helping the environment of the whole planet by this phrase of renewables that you've mentioned several times in your presentation. That's a shorthanded word for saying, instead of carbon fuels that are putting gas, greenhouse grass gases into the atmosphere, this is a way of using things like wind power, solar power, all that kind of stuff, so that you can not only save money when you're writing your bills every month, but you can also help preserve the planet for future generations. So when you combine those two things, I very much would want to see this article go forward at town meeting and very, very much want to commend the Energy Committee for putting this together and having it available for the town of Sherburne.
Now, we're excited about, for those of you who are experiencing.
Marion, go ahead. Or Jeff, did you want to say something?
I was just going to ask a question, but Marion? You can go first. It's fine.
Go ahead.
All right. I was just going to say, when you present this at town meeting, it might be good to clarify for the people of the town, what's the advantage to them to do this over, say, those who have responded to these Clean Choice Energy mailings that we all get and, you know, that are selling exactly the same thing. I think you should explain to people what the advantage of doing it with the town aggregation is.
Definitely, because it would save me two cents.
And another question I have for you, and this is a little off the subject, but if everybody in eastern Massachusetts or New England, say, all the towns bought into this, everybody went for Clean Choice Energy, 100% renewable, is there enough renewable available?
Well, when we were talking to Colonial Power, their answer was yes to our load and Boston's load, et cetera. I couldn't possibly answer whether every town in Massachusetts would. A lot of these are using Class 1 renewable energy, which is New England-based, but there are others that are often Texas and wind farms pulling their, their energy credits from there. So I really can't answer the question.
On that note, Marion, that's actually a good point. We, you said a lot of our neighboring communities have already done this. If we did this, could we aggregate with Holliston so then maybe we have a little more buying power because we're so small?
We asked Colonial about that as well, and we'll ask Mass Power Choice and Good Energy when we see them. Their answer was actually, interestingly, because I thought, like you, that would be a great idea, right? Let's get a big town in.
Exactly. Get their rates, not our 4,000.
What they said is that generally what happens is with the two towns, and Michael, if I don't explain this well, you explain it. Between the two towns is, one will have a better load view, so they're going to be the ones that pull the price downward, where the other one really is being subsidized by the bigger town. So they're getting a really cheap price where they don't have the same load. So most larger towns don't want to play with smaller towns because they end up subsidizing that town.
I'll supplement it by saying it's not, where you get a lower cost has nothing to do with the scale of your demand.
Oh, okay.
But it's the type of the configuration of your demand. So therefore, one town is always better than the other. You'd be piggybacking on somebody else who would say, "Why should I do it?"
Okay.
So it's not a matter of scale.
Okay.
It's just a matter of the demand characteristics, as they call it.
Is it concern over peak load? Is that the target?
Yeah. It's the peak and the shape even. It's a whole, it's a whole.
The only thing that would concern, I mean, the only thing that concerns me or I think anybody else is that it's an opt-out, not an opt-in program. It's feeling, it could feel forced to somebody. You're making me, you're making me do this.
And therefore, I mean, the consultant we talked to basically said, "You've got to make it very simple for people to opt in." Because the, what happens with opt-in is the amount of opt-in doesn't happen. But if I want to, if I, if I wanted to go back to Eversource, or I wanted to change tiers within, it's a, it's a phone call or an online thing.
Yeah, that would just be, I would stress how simple that is because some people don't want, don't want the government to tell them what to do.
Right. That's understood.
It's a matter of an educational process where you're going to have to know, the only piece of information you do have to know is your account, which for some people is not as simple as what they think. And it's not publicly, it's not like you could find it for people and say, "I'll help you do it," as I've learned from another town's experience on that. But, but yes, one has to phrase it as, right, they might not like the government telling them what to do, but to some extent, I would argue that it's an educational process also about the fact that whereas it might be feel like any position to you, it allows a lot of other people to be able to do something that is much more vetted and a better process. So that I would say, even if you don't like the government telling you, I would appreciate the fact that it allows probably a lot many more people to do something in a way that's more cost-effective and greener overall. So that, hopefully, that is that part of the side.
If we do this, would it opt us out of all the phone calls you get from different energy companies?
That was one of the first questions.
The answers, yeah. We did not get a good answer.
No. Never, ever. Never reduces.
Fred, is there a cost to the upfront process? Like, would we pay any kind of engineering consulting fees for the aggregator?
No, you work with an aggregator from the very beginning. They'll actually help with the town education prior to the vote.
Yeah.
Et cetera, and there are no costs to us. So.
Well, there is, I have to.
Well, there is the opportunity to add costs, yes.
No, there is, there are nuances to it, but there, no. Just so you understand, there is a cost that is built into whenever, basically, we're hiring, when you work with an aggregator, basically, the brokers, they're going up to, they're going up to get bids, and we will have the opportunity to look at their bids that they collect on different types of renewables and other kinds of stuff. But no, there is a very, the legislation has a .1 cent a kilowatt hour fee that they're allowed to take. So there is built into that a very small fee. I'm sort of impressed that they do it when I multiply my estimate. Now, maybe they're going to get, I don't know, $8,000 or $10,000 for running every year, or something like that, if everybody in the town opted in. So it's not a large amount, but there is a small price that we're all paying, it's .1 cent.
And that's included in the, in the price that we negotiate. So if we're negotiating a price lower than Eversource to pay a little bit to get that, for Eversource to pay them, or the supplier to pay them.
Great. Well, thank you. I think.
So close to the town, people are paying the price.
I think, I think this is good. I think it's definitely something we want to have on the warrant, so thank you for coming in and presenting. We just want to keep moving on our meeting here, so thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Fred. Thanks, Michael. And the rest of the Energy Committee. Last one on our list for the consideration warrant articles is the Governance Task Force. Is that Greg or Corey?
Corey needs her attorney, so I'm going to.
She can't afford to raise. No, no, get it set.
Does this base their experience?
Okay. All right, I guess I get to talk. I'm Greg Kennan, 129 Hall Street, and I'm a member of the Governance Task Force 2. Corey Lincoln, the Chair of our Governance Task Force. We have just, coming up on the end of two years of activity on the Governance Task Force, and for our last official act, or certainly one of them, we have proposed a warrant article, which came as a direct result of the activities that we did over the course of the previous two years. And the warrant article is a recommendation that the town appoint a communications team to assist in enhancing and facilitating communications and information flow among town departments and between the town and its citizens. We recommend that this team have exp- We recommend that this team have expertise in communications, public relations, or outreach and/or related technology fields. And it should be geared toward actually implementing with town employees incremental practical solutions in the short term. Why do we need this? Based on our research over the past two years, the task force, our task force believes that there are significant pervasive and pressing issues with communication and dissemination of information in the town. Communications issues were frequently observed by many different distinct and disparate sources. The academic studies, our interviews with town officials and employees, and in our citizen survey. These issues included both information flow between areas of town government as well as between town citizens and town government. For example, respondents in our citizen survey were neutral to negative in their views of how well the town government shares information with citizens and in how well citizens understand the structure and operations of town government. We believe, based on our activity and our research, that there's an asymmetry between how town citizens get information and how such information is provided. The news sources that we have available are unorganized and incomplete. The local news, like the Dover Sherburne Press and Hometown Weekly, are valuable, but coverage is limited. Council on Aging has its link, which is commendable, but it's got limited space and a limited publication schedule. And only a small percentage, we believe, of dedicated citizens will actually proactively review town board agendas and on the, or the website for items of interest to them. And the town government website currently is limited to town government itself and not to any more, any broader or more comprehensive set of information about town community events or items of interest. And we think other, there are other information channels like Nextdoor Sherburne, but they're not comprehensive nor universally accessed by town citizens. So given that communications issues were cited to us numerous times during our research from among a wide range of town officials, departments, and citizens, we believe that efforts to improve communication with citizens and stakeholders would be useful and appreciated by town officials and citizens alike. Part of the expressed charge to the Governance Task Force was to look at what other towns do and recommend adoption of practices that look like they might be useful here. And we found a lot of other examples in other towns about how towns disseminate information to citizens. For example, the town of Shirley has an official communications committee, which is a volunteer group appointed by the Board of Selectmen, the mission of which is to keep the town of Shirley informed, engaged, foster community spirit, and relay nonpartisan information to help residents make informed decisions. In Boxborough, the Community Services Department publishes The Boxborough Bee, which is a 16-page newsletter. It comes out every month or two, and it's got all kinds of information about what's going on in town. The Lincoln Board of Selectmen, and I can hand these up if you'd like. The Lincoln Board of Selectmen publishes The Board of Selectmen News. Again, another newsletter that attempts to bring to this attention of the town citizens kind of what's going on in town. Wellesley, engaged with the, through a community compact agreement, the town of Wellesley partnered with the Massachusetts Office of Municipal and School Technology to develop a strategy to potentially increase community engagement, and they came up with a 36-page, 38-page report on different ways they can do that. And it did such things as look at, at social media, looked at other ways in which information could be disseminated, and recommended approaches to improve information flow and citizen involvement in that town. And again, I can hand these up if you want. So what we are not prescribing is any kind of comprehensive study and revamp of town communications necessarily. We believe that there are many opportunities for small, kind of near-term, low-hanging fruit improvements that could be implemented at small cost or effort but would have real and tangible benefits. We think that the communications team should not let the perfect be the enemy of the good, but should look for easy ways to improve communications. Now, if it has the expertise and energy to look at this more comprehensively, more power to them. But we think that looking for short-term improvements, any improvement, would be beneficial, and they ought to look at that. And we, as the Governance Task Force, are not recommending any particular vehicle like this or any particular areas to look at. That's not our job, and it would be within the expertise of the communications team to look at that. And there's just a couple of other things that we believe might be helpful and that the team might look at. One is a citizen portal, an area that town should look into, which would be a single household portal where routine and recurring transactions may occur and information may be obtained. The town of Lincoln, I think again, has, on the top of their website lists, create an account, increase your productivity, customize your experience, and engage in information you care about. So they have a, you can, citizens can have a particularized experience through the Lincoln website, getting information or conducting transactions. And the last thing we might recommend that they look at is some sort of know-your-town initiative, whether it be a publication, a program, or something, to make sure that citizens in Sherburne understand how town operates, how they get information, and how the town is governed. The town meeting process, for those of us who've lived here for 20-odd years, still is arcane and mysterious in large degree, and if you're a newer person in town, it may be even more so. So any, any kind of educational outreach like that, we think would be helpful.
Great. Thank you. My first question is, does this need a town meeting vote, or would it be something that we could just set up a communications team as a select board?
Well, we were, I'm the color commentator.
Okay.
We were actually a little unsure about that ourselves, but particularly because, well, it has a two-part answer from our viewpoint. One is that the members of the team would be appointed in consultation with the select board, but the heavy lifting would actually be done by the moderator. And I've actually spoken with the moderator about that. And things that are moderator-appointed tend to flow via town meeting, although they technically don't have to, I don't think. And the other thing is, it is an education process, and probably the best way to address the greatest number of engaged citizens is a town meeting. And if they knew that such thing was available and that things were coming, that that would be helpful.
Any other questions?
I'm voting for a town prior at 10:00 PM every night. I'd start by October. Seriously, for a second, though, you know, if you look at what the Sherburne Link did, they really transformed that whole publication to be, it used to be kind of a, a bit of its format, but it was really much more vivid and colorful and laid out better now. And I think, actually think Bob Murchison's mother may, Peggy, may have been involved in that.
Well, she was, she was involved in the one that was on the vanilla-covered paper. The latest edition that just came out, I believe Sue, who's the director now, does that herself.
Did that, too, yeah.
One of the issues about that, and you may have noticed if you read the link, is that we ran an article in the previous issue about the CM&amp;D, as a matter of fact. And we were hoping that we would be able, each issue, to do another article about a different department and town government. Unfortunately, well, we started out just as the, at the time that there was kind of this transformation going on within the COA.
Yeah.
And part of the issue was, they do do that in part, and I don't know what the percentage is, with money, grant money. And they were being very careful about having things that were aimed specifically at the older community and thought that we were a little too general.
Yeah. But I think they did, going back to my point, I think they did do a good job of making communication better, I think.
Oh, yeah.
It shows that we can do it.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think that's a very good point. We can do it, and, you know, I think it takes, with some level of formality, the process will continue on.
Wouldn't you just have to sue to vote for the whole town?
Well, and the one, the one thing that was very interesting in the Wellesley study was that their conclusion was is that there is no perfect way to communicate with all the citizens in your town. There are various platforms, and what you need to do is identify who uses what platform and advertise, you know, spread information across all platforms. We were also, one of the reasons why we're not being terribly specific about what this team could do is that we want to do a series of big and little things that sort of spring up from various committees and town departments about what they believe their needs are, what they'd like to get out to the townspeople. Some committees and departments do a good job with doing this. Recreation and COA is a good example. Others don't do anything at all. And quite often, they told us that it was a case of either lack of time or lack of technical knowledge.
Paul?
Can I just add that anything that improves communication with our citizens is something that we should be supporting. So why not do this?
I think it makes sense to have it on the warrant. I appreciate the work that you've put into it.
Can I just voice my opposition to it? I don't think it should be going to town meeting. We met, right?
Right.
And was I against it then?
Going to town meeting? Not that I heard.
I think what I don't like is that it's, it's not, if it's under the select board or an advisory group to the town administrator where they have access to operations and funding, great. But if they're out acting on their own under the authority of the moderator, and it's kind of, it's kind of loosely defined, I just don't like it. It gives me great anxiety right now.
Well, actually, what we talked, what I remember that we talked about, we thought we incorporated in the language that it was under the supervision of the town administrator. Our thought was, is that you, we didn't want to be burdensome to the town administrator, but we also, on the other hand, wanted to make sure that they weren't going off the rails independently and that somebody was keeping an eye on them and that they would be appointed by the moderator in consultation with the select board, but they wouldn't be just running, you know, rogue.
I mean, if they're, if they have to come and get approval from the town administrator and they're only called into service as needed by, as determined by the town administrator, it doesn't, it just doesn't make sense to me. I just don't think it's a good model, but it should be like every other committee that's an operational committee, an internal operation committee appointed by the select board. And if it's even better, if it's an advisory committee to the town administrator administratively, that their, their job becomes a lot easier because they, they don't have to be posting meetings and worrying about agendas. They can actually work on things when they want to do it without, and I know that's, that's against communications and communication, but it's where people can have, I think, better conversations when they want it and when they need it.
Okay. It's, I understand your comment, it's kind of two parts. One is the appointing authority, and not, most, I totally agree with you, but not all teams and committees are appointed by the select board, but some are appointed by the moderator. We were.
Yeah. No, I said internal operations. Someone who's involved in internal operations like energy committee, and they're going to be working with the sustainability coordinator, ones that have some sort of staff that's tied into finance department or operations or, or, you know, something inside the town structure. It's not under an elected board. It's, it's under, I mean, an elected authority. It's like an operational wing that's a task force. That's, and that's what I would prefer.
What are, what would you like to see changed? I'm sorry, quite frankly, I don't quite understand your issue.
As it's written right now, it, I said, it gives me great anxiety, and I don't like that it's, it's appointed by the moderator working outside, and I don't think that that's going to work, that they can't do any work unless they come to the town administrator to get called into service. It's just, they're going to have priorities that I think are very different priorities. So they wouldn't be called together. So I just don't like the structure. That's, that's all. When I first came here, we had a communications committee, and I did all I could to get it sunsetted because it was stepping on operational people who were supposed to be working on that issue. So it gets sunsetted. This seems like similar thing, but.
Is it your assumption that the team, our viewpoint was that the team would be operating as consultants to other committees or staffers who wanted to do specific things and needed help with tech information or writing or organization?
Right. The town changed the bylaw and put all the IT under me. We're trying to change the budget and put the budget under me.
Yes.
So I wouldn't want you going and talking to any department or committee or trying to work on anything unless it had already come through me, which means that you're, you're going to be working against a pipeline of.
Well, we thought they were going through you, so now I'm confused.
They should be, but you just said that you'd be working with committees and other departments that need it. The town put me, changed my bylaw to make me the central person of IT. So that's why I said it would be great for me if there was an advisory group that could work on its own freely advising the town administrator or appointed by the select board. It's a little bit closer than having a moderator-appointed committee that, that is appointed by an elected person. I mean, an elected body, elected person.
Yeah, and yet advisory is kind of an interesting, when you were a town moderator, I'm sure that was one of the hardest things to appoint to because they don't have any independent authority. But in fact, they do. They make recommendations and oversee the whole town budget in a way that almost no other group can do. And that's appointed exclusively by the moderator.
Yeah. I, I'm a little perplexed by this because we were appointed by the moderator, you know, the, the structure of town government. The, as I recall, the electronic voting was appointed by the moderator, and I think there was another one that was appointed by the moderator. I'm not sure that I see that that makes a particular difference.
But this isn't a task force. We're talking about something that's going to exist a long time, not working on identifying what the next information system is going to be used. This is going to be around for a long time and needs to, to me, be closer and incorporated into the government more than.
Can I, can I, can we hop to your second issue about the process of who do they answer to? Are they operating independently?
Well, you wrote in here, it says, members of the team would be appointed by the moderator for a two-year term, called into service as needed and supervised by the town administrator. I assume that called into service as needed by the town administrator and supervised by the town administrator, is that what that means?
Well, called into service when needed, it was because we didn't, we didn't want to have specific duties that in February they had to do this, in March they had to do this, in April they had to do this. The idea was that they would be used as needed whenever a committee or a department had something that they wanted to work on and they needed technical consulting assistance for it. Now, if you want them to go through you, who Now, if you want them to go through you, who will then call upon the team and say, our, our thought also was that we would have people on the team of different skillsets and not everyone would be, you know, called up to work on any particular project, that then they would be brought in to, to be the consultant to whoever wanted to do something, but it was going to be working via you. This is exactly the language I gave to you when we talked about it.
Yeah, and I've had how long to think about it?
Oh, okay.
A while to think about it.
Okay.
And I don't like it, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
The only way I'm going to utilize this is if I have more control of it. And I don't think it's set up for any control under the Board of Selectmen or under the town administrator. It's too loose right now for me.
Okay.
I like the idea of it, but I want to be controlling it. That's, you can't fault me for that because it's in the bylaw that I'm supposed to be in charge of it.
I'm not faulting you, I'm just wishing you'd told me that before tonight.
Well, I think maybe, maybe what needs to happen is have a discussion offline and see if there's any, if you guys have any
Yeah.
Movement on it before, I'm sorry, Carol, you would, you had a question, go ahead.
Could we solve half of this issue if the communication group, I forgot what you called them, if they were a body of five and three or a funged by the selectman and two by the moderator?
I think that becomes complicat-
Yeah.
Sean?
I got a solution, just why don't you put it on the warrant? Because you clearly got it.
Right. I think at this point,
You're not going to fix this.
At this point, we'd leave it on the warrant. And I think there's discussion with the town administrator especially and maybe have a meeting with him and the town moderator and just see how this would work.
Okay.
But I think it is, it is, my, the only question I had was at the very beginning. I think it was kind of what David, like, does it need to be in the town meeting, but to discuss it in front of everybody, that probably makes sense.
Can we get sort of some feedback from, from the select board about the general concept?
Any thoughts, anyone else?
Well, I've already, I've already said my.
I'm kind of torn. I agree with Paul, but I, I agree with David also, right? It sounds wishy-washy, I realize, but.
Well, Jeff, Jeff, I just,
Let me just finish my statement, Cory, a second.
Certainly.
So, I mean, when I, when I used to work in consulting companies to set up a strategic planning department, but it didn't work well because you really wanted everyone to run in their own strategy. You didn't want like some outside group doing strategic planning. You wanted to manage your, this plant, manage this strategy for their plant. So, I get the point that this is a resource to the town is what you're really saying, but at the same time, you don't want to absolve the town department heads of the need to manage their own communications too. So, that's where I'm torn. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
But also, I guess I would consider a little bit whether an outsider view looking in might be more valuable, might have value.
That's possible, but, but I, I don't want them to own it, is what I'm saying. I think that's what David said. I don't want them to, then they become a crutch and they do all the communications. You want your people to be communicated. You want every department head to be doing that.
No, I don't think that was the intent that they would be doing.
Doing it.
Communicating. They would be assisting you, figuring out.
How to do it.
No, I get it, it's a resource, like you said, a resource to the department heads, but.
Well, the, the two comments that we got from various staffers in particular and also committees was that they didn't have the time to do some of the things that they wanted to do.
Yeah.
And they didn't have the specific skillset to do it. And so, what we're just trying to do is have them come in and be a resource. Set it up. They're not going to be forever running, you know, what's going on.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
I said, that's kind of the yin and the yang I see here is that there's that sort of.
Well, if we manage to make David happy, can we just get some feedback on the general issue?
I think what I had said, Cory, when I had met you with you is, I don't like it, but I'm not, I wasn't going to oppose it. It's what?
I think there's, I think we want to, I think we, personally, I think I'd like to see it on the warrant. I'd like to make sure there's more streamlining between the town administrator and what, kind of get more feedback from him is if there's a way to change this to make it work for him and that it could be, I think there's some work to be done on it, but it's, it should be on the warrant.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, the one thing, and I actually have an issue for a lot of these, not quite ad hoc committees, but I'm wondering if we should have an automatic sunset provision so that it is the continuing, you know, so set it up for four years. We're having problems finding volunteers for all the committees in town.
Well, quite frankly, one of the reasons why we had the moderator getting it is I think she's done, she put together our committee and it's the best committee I've ever been on, reached out to all kinds of people, was very proactive in filling the spots. And we thought that that was a very good thing for whatever was going on.
And your life will be, it'll be what, a three-year committee? I mean, the original governance task force was two and a half years.
Kitty did it initially, wasn't there one before that?
Yeah, there was one before us.
Yeah, I was on the first one.
And we, we weren't expecting that this, we were, the reason we said for a two-year term was we originally thought about having it be open-ended and people would be doing it as long as they were willing to. We decided that what we really need to do was have a two-year trial to see if it was feasible, if it worked. That's why we set a two-year term.
That's interesting because the two-year term doesn't suggest, suggest to me that it
Yeah, well.
Don't go on forever with new two-year termers.
That was our intention, but maybe we need to be more specific about it.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right, and I think the next thing on the agenda would be to open the warrant. I know Paul and Heidi both have items they'd like to add to the warrant, so do I have a motion to open the warrant for, open the warrant? Well, do I have a motion to kick Sean Kalina? I'm not, just kidding. A motion to open the warrant tonight and close it again tonight after we have a couple of things that we need to talk about?
I think Jeff's about to so-move.
Oh, so-move.
Also second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, so the warrant is now open.
Good thing we were two to two, right?
Paul, what were the articles that you wanted to add?
So, by, by state law, there's a fee that all of these ride-share programs have to pay to every municipality in the Commonwealth. And the governor is proposing quadrupling the fee. The statute says that the fees have to go into a special fund set up by each municipality. And the funds can only be used for transportation-related projects and so on and so on. So, we literally need, in order to comply with state law, to create the fund to receive it. This isn't, I'm not trying to raise the issue about, is this a lot of money? Is this a little bit of money? Even if it was five cents, you have to put it into its.
Okay. Well, let's, let's just set up the, a warrant article then to create the fund.
And the second is that in December 2018, the Commonwealth adopted a, what they call leveling the playing field statute that said that the lodging tax that communities currently can opt into would apply not only to the traditional hotels and motels and so on, but also to Airbnb-type platforms. That's a six percent fee, a six percent
Tax.
Automatic tax that gets added to the bill. The statute also goes on to say that local option, you can add an additional three percent and encourages each city in town to adopt inspectional requirements for these facilities to make sure they're not death traps and authorizes communities to establish local fees for that. So, there's a six percent fee, there's a three percent fee, and then there's the fees for inspections.
So, we need to just adopt the statute? That's what the warrant article would be?
Well, at this point, it would be to, to make sure that we have the six percent and the three percent. But the six percent has to be the same as the fee that we're charging for lodging. You can't charge more. So, whatever, for example, there's, there's some rooms for rent at the Sherburne Inn. Whatever the town has adopted for lodging tax for traditional facilities.
So, I'll just call it the lodging tax warrant.
Actually, I think Heritage is now posting exclusively on Airbnb. I'm not positive about that.
So, I think what we need to do is have a warrant article that we adopt a lodging tax statute or whatever.
And adopt the lodging tax, and I, I would say go ahead with the three percent.
Okay.
The inspection part could be hard though because how do you know if someone's doing Airbnb in their home?
So, the statute requires all Airbnbs in order to do business in the Commonwealth have to register with, with the Commonwealth. And they've authorized cities and towns to develop local registries also.
Mm-hmm.
There are Airbnbs here in town because they got complaints before them onto the building inspector because they can be very active and a lot of turnover and so on.
Absolutely.
The state collects the, the money. We just receive a check. So, we don't have to, we're not involved in the collecting, the, all that enforcing stuff.
But we have to, we, we wouldn't inspect it, the state would inspect it?
No, no, I'm talking about the three percent and the
No, I know that, but the inspection thing is what I'm questioning.
So, the, once you know where they are, communities adopt bylaws that say that no facility can actually
That's a whole nother.
I guess.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's a whole nother article, right?
It's, it's inspected by the town and made sure they're not death traps.
No, I get it, that's a big process then if we were going to do that and do inspections of these.
Yeah, I mean, the idea is, do they have fire escapes? If there's a fire?
Yeah, yeah.
And all that kind of stuff.
I get it. So, Paul, what do, I guess, what are you proposing for warrant articles? I'm confused because there's this inspection thing that's a whole new bylaw or there's the three percent, there's a six percent. Like, what, what do you want on the warrant?
Well, I'm saying really, all three should go on, but the ones that are quick and easy is the, the low-hanging fruit is to collect the money.
Right.
Whatever money we can, we can get.
Still confused as to what we actually want to put on the warrant.
We ought to get. As far as inspecting it, I personally think that we should be inspecting these to make sure they're safe. If somebody came into town and occupied a, a building and died or was, was raped or, or got electrocuted, that would really bother me, but.
Yeah, it's just I worry that what if we inspected it, said it's safe, and then someone died?
Nancy, you had your hand up.
I think the answer to your last question is, I think in this law, it specifically protects the building inspector from liability.
Okay.
But isn't this all one thing, Paul, doesn't the, the ability for a town to write their own requirements and rules about Airbnb, collect the tax on it and have inspections? Isn't that all under one?
Is it, is it a matter of just adopting a state statute?
That's what I'm asking, isn't it? It's a local adopt?
You don't have to adopt all, you can adopt whatever you want.
I think the most important thing is, as Jeff just said, is to make sure they're inspected. And, and you can charge a fee for that, but you can also give the building inspector some right to say, this is not safe to have people stay here.
You probably don't need to fix the rate on the warrant either.
No, I think, I think that's something we could adjust as needed as a select board. So, I think we need, I just say, I'm just saying, let's add to the warrant checklist and have David talk with town council about what the articles, one is for creating the fund for ride-sharing and another one is on the lodging statute related to Airbnbs.
There's a third one I want to mention.
Yep.
This is coming from DEP, pushing all the communities to adopt what they, they call stormwater enterprise funds. This, this has arisen because the federal government with the Clean Water Act has issued these permit requirements, which are called national pollution elimination discharge permits. And they cost money. And we have, in the warrant, we have a number of things that are related to getting the town to comply with our permit requirements. We're one of the communities in Massachusetts that's subject to permit requirements to meet all of this, costs money. And when we go to the state and say, give us the money to do this, what they want us to do is to adopt an enterprise fund for stormwater maintenance. This enterprise fund is based on revenues that we're expected to charge property owners who are generating stormwater that goes onto streets and ways in the town and take the costs of, of street cleaning and the cost of cleaning storm drains and buying equipment that's associated with that and consultants and so on. Take the costs and you divide it up amongst the property owners based on the impervious surfaces that they create and does it flow into the street? So, if you have, I don't want to mention particular properties, but let's say you have a property in town that's commercial, let's say maybe it's a gas station and maybe it has a storm drain and because it's all paved, the water's going to the storm drain. Well, our town is required under this permit system to clean the storm drain and we may have to buy these trucks. I've been seeing other towns buying all these big vacuum trucks and all this stuff. Instead of coming out of the general fund, DEP is saying, you're supposed to be charging the property owners who are generating the, the costs. So, they have all kinds of guidances, they have all kinds of forms, they have all kinds of stuff we're supposed to be adopting.
I think, I think it makes sense to add it. I would love to get Eric's view on this. He certainly is very familiar with the, this issue in training here. What'd you say, Sean?
Eric's brought it up.
Okay.
Because obviously, that's a big deal.
Okay. So, we'll add that as a warrant article and let's get Eric's input on it and go.
Because we can always take it back, take it off later.
All right, Heidi? Because I'm not letting Paul put any more on. No, you don't have it. Oh, look who walks in. Speaking of Mr. Stormwater. We just talked about adding a warrant article for an enterprise fund for stormwater management.
Oh, wow.
Who's idea that? Paul's.
Paul's taking the job. You better get back here.
Is the, he's gonna have it. So, is the warrant article to actually execute the enter-
I was literally talking about this thirty minutes ago.
We literally, we literally were, we left it with, we need to talk to Eric about what we're, what we need to put in this warrant article.
One thing I'd definitely like to do first is, I don't know if he can do a fun again estimate, do a kind of a feasibility study to kind of see how it would actually affect it. In certain type of communities that are very homogeneous, sometimes it doesn't make sense. In other communities, it does make sense and make some difference. Depends on how many like tax-exempt properties you have, how many industrial properties, properties with large, um, impervious area. You know, I use Adessa as an example. I don't think we would be ready to move forward at town meeting to actually execute an enterprise fund, but we'd like to somehow start the process to look into it. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'm not sure what we put on for a warrant article, but.
The problem is that we have expenditures already
Yeah.
That would have been paid by the enterprise fund. And by putting, putting those expenditures, which are already on the warrant and having them voted, what we're doing is hitting the, the general taxpayers of the town, whereas the enterprise fund is more targeted towards
It's based on use.
A fee system that's based on the people who are generating it need to pay for it.
It's a user-fee system and it is, it's based on use. Sherman's a little different, it is a bit homogeneous where it's largely a residential-type setup. And anyway, that's a level of detail probably doesn't matter into this. So, again, I just want to, Paul, was your thought to actually execute the enterprise fund at town meeting? I don't mean execute, but actually get the authorization at town meeting to have the Board of Selectmen execute it or is it be to study it? You know what I mean?
I would say to authorize the Board of Selectmen to
The, the risky-
Choose to implement it.
I guess here's, here's my, because the only risky part is, I don't think, right? So, like, for example, by, by town meeting, I know we will not have like an estimate of how much it will cost the average. I know we will not have like an estimate of how much it will cost the average, average rate payer. We, we, there's no way we'll have that by town meeting. I'm quite certain of that. As long as it doesn't kill it, hurt it, and then you know how it, oh, it's very popular when they bring things back next year, you know, don't pass the first year. And so I'm kind of worried about that, you know what I mean? I'm just worried that, I think it's something that's definitely worth looking into.
Do we want to, do we want to table it now and study it and then figure out exactly what we want to do next year?
I wouldn't mind actually, or, or simply frankly, a fiscal authorization to, with, you know, price to be determined and get some estimates to actually look into the feasibility of it, you know, and do a.
Let me ask a clarifying question. Does it only apply to stormwater runoff caused by you having impervious surfaces? Let me take an example of a farm that maybe uses irrigation and causes a lot of water runoff there properly, not related to impervious surface, but relate to doing irrigation. So that's what I'm wondering. And since we're more of an agricultural community, that might actually apply more. I'm wondering if it's only the impervious surface that causes the stormwater runoff or through the other reasons?
It really is based on impervious surface and sometimes you can factor in total land size. So even, even pervious area does actually have some runoff. You're right. So even grass actually has some runoff. But you still make that some kind of unit. So like, for example, a common thing is actually look at what's a residential unit equivalent. You look at average areas in town, something like that. And that way every single homeowner gets a set of, of flat fee. And then for commercial areas, you have residential unit equivalents. It's like a DESA, like a hundred or a thousand residential unit equivalents. You know, something like that. And then they get, you know, they get charged accordingly.
Because we don't have that many people that are unusual, you're just going to take the costs we're already paying and distribute it uniformly over town.
That's why I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah.
I do. And also looking at how many, I'm sorry, tax exempt properties as well, because that makes a difference as well.
I think what we should do is study this and bring it next year. I don't think it's ready. I think we're adding a lot of stuff and when it's pretty much March, we should have been doing this in January.
I, I still.
Again, this is coming from DEP, number one. Number two.
No, I know, but did we know about it in January? Like, why are we talking about it just starting now?
I'm currently working on one of these for another town who's fairly rural and has a lot of farms. And their calculations indicate that some of the commercial businesses would be paying some pretty good money. But the average homeowner who has runoff into a storm drain would be paying like sixty dollars per year. That, when I say a homeowner using a storm drain, we don't have that many storm drains in town. It's the whole, the town is not storm drained everywhere.
I don't like the idea of charging a homeowner for water that might run off their property.
So we have drains like in.
No, thanks.
How do you watch, like, I have a storm drain.
You want to go to town meeting with another tax.
No, yeah, that sounds like it. And I also think that, I, to be quite honest, if, I don't like the idea of, we have very few businesses in this town. If you're all of a sudden going to strap them with another tax and another thing, what, how are we ever going to get any businesses to open in this town?
I do want to.
If you just keep taxing them and taxing them.
I would like to.
Some of those businesses might have our stormwater in their program.
Well, I do want to interject here. Careful though on speak like that until you see the details. Trust me on this. They're absolute devils on detail.
I just, that's, that's a concern I have of many of those kind of things.
I was literally speaking about this forty minutes ago. And that's not even an exaggeration. And, and that's after a massive amount of study. It's not a rain tax. It is not any extra burden because what it'll essentially do, it'll offset what we're spending in the taxes. So it's going to come from somewhere. We're going to spend, it's not like we're going to spend more money. You know, Sean's still going to spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars or whatever the hell it is, hick it is, on whatever. So that's still going to happen. It depends how it gets paid for. That's what it points down to. So I mean, whatever that commercial property is paying in taxes, that's going to go to storm. This is just essentially more fair. So there's some metric, which has been tested all over the country, by the way. Massachusetts is the last one to do it. I still would like to, I would like to actually support with Paul on a town meeting article to basically fund a study on this. I'd like to do a.
How do you treat municipal property? If you look at the most impervious property in town, I bet you Pine Hill's parking lot and driveway is probably one of the bigger ones. So how do you treat municipal properties?
That's a policy. So it's a policy whether you actually.
So I think what we'll do is put a, go, yeah, go ahead.
Just one more comment on that. I've already brought an article in the warrant for stormwater and it's not fully defined. Because what the work we're going to do in the next twelve to eighteen months is fully defined.
So we have.
There's no reason we can't sell that money.
Yeah.
Or because it's the same consultant we'd be doing. It's ACOM, it's ACOM that would most likely be helping us with that.
Okay, so we have a stormwater MS four compliance consultant approved.
Yeah, it'd probably be just different consultant.
Quarter million dollars.
Right. So hopefully.
There's only a handful of, there's many consultants that can, that can help with these compliances. Only a handful of consultants know how to sign a present enterprise. There's millions that no, actually will tell you they know how to do it. There's really only probably like five that actually know how to do it.
He comes big.
So don't you think we've satisfied if, if you guys decide the need for that during the year? Couldn't we use that money that's already been asked for that study for the following year? So it doesn't need to be a separate thing on the warrant.
I don't think we need a separate warrant article, to be quite honest.
Okay.
And I think in the meantime, we can study it, bring it next year when we've had time to, because I really, right now it's going to be forced. It's beginning, we have two weeks before we're going to advisory and I just.
Yeah, it feels not ready for prime time.
That's what I'm feeling unfortunate. I mean, I understand why you're asking for it. Carol.
As your town clerk, I can't say this strongly enough. Please do not add articles at this point that will not be ready for prime time in a week, two weeks.
Right. So I think that one, I mean, if we want to take a vote on it.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine with using the existing.
We have the one in capital for the stormwater.
It'll, it'll simply be just, you know, it'll be funds that actually don't go into actually compliance, but it'll be funds into whatever. But I think frankly, I think two fifty is robust enough.
Okay. Great. So we have those two from Paul and now Heidi.
Okay. First one is a housekeeping article. I found out the town has never adopted a certain section and right now, so unclaimed property, there's a bunch of cash, uncashed checks, things that are returned, you have to follow procedure. The money has to be distributed to the state. If you vote this section in after following through the procedures, the money is returned back to the general ledger of the town. So I would like to vote to have this put in so that we get the money back as opposed to me writing a check to the state.
That's, that makes sense. That sounds like a good, another housekeeping article.
Yeah.
I'm surprised we haven't done it.
I didn't know that we hadn't adopted it.
Okay, great. So that's, and then the other one?
And the second one is I've had someone who's in tax taking, they have asked if they can donate the property to the land. It has to be accepted at the town meeting vote, so I didn't want to wait another year if we didn't have to. They owe just under six thousand right now, then there's probably this year's taxes as well on this piece of property. Turned out the town had actually taken this property before several years ago and sold it and now it's back into taxes.
Is it three point nine acres? Is that what?
It's, I have about three point nine acres.
Okay, because it looks like thirty nine because I don't see the period on the copy that you gave us. So, so this property is one, if we take it back, I mean, rather than just having another property sitting on our non-taxuals, can we sell it?
Well.
Or is it worth anything?
I'm asking for it to come to the select room, the board of select, the select board rather, because there's potential maybe to look, there is town on land next to this that may be conservation or perhaps for an affordable housing. If we ever did a habitat humanity project, there's something we could use to either.
Offset.
Barter would, offset change.
One of the things we need to be prepared, I think, is identify what the lost tax revenue is. Anytime we're talking.
Nancy's got her hand up. She may have an answer for you.
I was just going to say, this is, a few years ago, we did the same thing. I wrote the money through that people said, you're just paying not getting taxes on the law. It costs money to go through land court and all the things you have to do to get this off. So if you can get, I mean, I hate to see money come off the tax roll, but as Heidi said, a piece like this you can use and you need to swap for town forest or for conservation.
Okay.
I advised, I need to be sure that it went into the select, this name rather than automatically to one of the other groups impatiently.
So it's not a billable law. It's, there's never.
If this is the second time, there's got to be.
Yeah, there's got to be.
That's why I think it's, twenty six hundred dollars was the revenue, was the tax bill.
Okay.
So that would be the loss to the town is about twenty six hundred.
This is a good idea. We should do it.
It's, it's going to save the money in the court. I mean, it's, that we have to do anyway.
This way I don't have to file in land court.
Yeah, let's just clarify here. So instead of board of selectmen, it's select board.
Select board, yes.
Okay. Great. So we'll add those two. And the only other thing that we had talked about earlier since the warrants opened was Article twenty-three on our list of the Coolidge Crossing. We need to change that to, change, change it to granting an easement rather than a land use zoning article.
And if you do a lip, that does not require town meeting approval.
So it's only the easement. The lip, we said it's a select board and then we sign off on it and then it goes to the ZBA.
ZBA, right, okay.
Wait, why does the easement need?
So they have access to the pipes.
But why do you, you give the easements? You give rights of use for, for Eversource all the time?
I was told.
Why is that different for town meeting?
We were told that it required town meeting.
Eversource has easement, that's Coolidge Street, I read.
Yeah, it was Gino though.
Gino was the one that thought we needed to do this.
Did you need to be good?
Well, because it's a private, because they're going to have privately owned pipes. Eversource is a public utility. I don't know if it's a difference because of that.
Yeah, it might be different.
What's the detail? Is it on a parcel? I don't know the details.
Oh, sorry. We were talking about Coolidge and the water lines from Framingham and the sewer lines from Natick are going to end up being most likely privately owned by the condo association, not by either town. So they need an easement in order to access those pipes if they need maintenance.
Yeah, partly because they're not an established utility. A utility has rights in the state law to grant a location to be within a right of. And if they're not an established utility.
Okay, so that's why.
That makes sense.
Okay. So we'll have town council, David, put together an article for that.
If it turns out we don't, we can always remove it.
Right.
Let's add it now and.
Okay.
And I really do have an easy one.
No, 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 you said you weren't allowed to.
Is he still in the room?
It's a revolving fund. We actually tried last year and it, we just ran out of time for.
It's, it's for the, when they, we get money in from selling various equipment. We have funds, we'd like to, Sean wants it to be a revolving fund, so we can go, he can go back out and spend it buying new equipment from the sale of the old.
So the warrant's to set up a new revolving fund?
Yes, to set up a new revolving fund and at the same time give some.
Instead of, because right now if we sell equipment, it just goes into the general fund.
Well, right. So we do it all the time. When you buy capital equipment or you just have access, surplus equipment, you sell it, it's gone. And so your choices oftentimes when you, when you buy capital equipment is you intentionally trade it in. And you, you may not be getting a good value for that or you're, you're trading in for credit against something else. And it's kind of a shuffle where you should, sometimes it's just fiscally responsible to sell it at the best rate you can get it.
Does this make, Heidi or Sharon, does this make sense as a revolving fund to do this? Do you think?
Well, without Sean access to money.
Having it voted on by the town to.
So I can tell you what I saw in another town, which was, an objection was made that people, the objection was that voters wanted to decide what equipment was bought. And if you have it in a revolving account, that means that the, in this case, the DPW chief would decide whether he's buying a lawnmower or a pickup truck from proceeds that's in the fund. Whereas the tradition of the town has been advisory looks to see what, do you really need a lawnmower? Do you really need a?
And then this could open it up then, does a fire, fire department want a fund where they can buy their own?
We were actually, so two things to that. We were actually, A, not limiting it to DPW because it's going to be the sale of proceeds from any equipment or vehicles. And two, you can limit the expenditures out of it. So the town does not vote on any equipment that I buy that's under five thousand dollars. I buy those out of my budget. So if we're selling several pieces of surplus equipment that have already been written off and they accumulate up to enough to buy a mower or some, you know, a piece of equipment that goes on the back of the tractor, the town ordinarily wouldn't have voted on that anyway. What we're doing, it's fiscally responsible, right?
Could we limit it to items that are under five thousand? That you can only purchase things that are.
I don't see why you couldn't.
Because I think people need to.
Would I try to buy a fifty thousand dollar?
No, I know. I just want to make sure it's something where, as, as we said, we don't want to establish an equipment slush fund where you can go out and choose without having the voters being able to vote on what, what is being purchased.
Right. No, it's not, it's not a significant amount of money.
It could be limited to what the amount that the physical year is sold or.
Well, we set the spending limits on revolving funds every year anyway.
Right.
That's right.
I'm sure you can set the single use.
I know from capital budget that he's exactly right. They often, if you trade it in, you don't get a very good value for it because they figure they have you over the barrel.
Okay, I'm okay with adding it to the warrant if you guys are to, and then we can set the parameters of, I think we'd want to put parameters in there that just say it's limited to certain types of equipment because we don't want large capital items, you know. If, if that revolving fund grows to a big thing and the town people don't get to vote on.
Just my concern is he said it was all equipment. So if the fire department sells something, it'll be spent by the DPW?
No, 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 no. It would be, it would be a town. It's not a DPW thing. It's a town, it's a revolving fund for the town for sold equipment, not DPW, not.
So who's going to be the spending authority?
The town administrator.
Basically surplus. It'd be surplus equipment, right?
Yeah, surplus.
Yeah.
So the town administrator would be the spending authority.
Yes. Or the select board. I mean.
It might be the select board.
Because most of the equipment is, comes in through, you know, one of our budgets.
It's almost all your equipment.
It's all, it's almost all your equipment.
I can't think of where it's not. It's police, fire.
Yeah, I mean, whatever little things the school has don't really, I mean.
It probably should be the board of select.
Is town forest?
Because I can imagine that.
Town forest, yes, they're all.
The police department say, I want the money for a cruiser and I could see the fire department saying, no, we want the money for.
Right. So I think we'd do it under the, under the select board.
Right.
But you're, but you're saying under five thousand.
Yeah, so it's like, yeah, it's little, yeah, so they'd have to come to us for approval to spend it and that's fine. Okay. Let's, I'm, does everybody else?
Yeah, sounds, sounds okay as long as.
Worth discussion. It's worth discussion, exactly.
Would you keep track of the receipts by department and they would only have access to?
It's very easy to track. I mean, track it now against the general.
So like Sean would only have access to the revenue that he generates, police would have access to it.
Well, the problem with making it so rigid is that if the police department has some money and that they don't plan to spend it in that particular year and, and Sean has an item that he needs to get and he doesn't have enough money for the sale of his broken mower.
Yeah. I think.
Do we want a handicap?
Or, or we can use it, that most funds instead of the revolving fund when we need to, if some, emergency comes up in the year and we have money in this. But I would call it the surplus equipment, like you said, a revolving fund called surplus equipment. And any equipment that's sold, the funds go into that.
Other than trading. The problem, we don't want to limit trading.
The trades are usually against the sale.
Yes, right. So that's never, we never see those funds.
That's not always fiscally responsible.
He's saying he can get more money, rather than trading it in, he can get more money by selling it.
Maybe. All I'm saying is if there's a trade in, there's no revenue to the town per se. It's just a reduced expenditure.
Right.
Correct.
Well, so we do that now. That's common now. But the flip side of that is sometimes it's best to not trade the equipment in because you need to have a lapse where you need to bring in the new. And I mean, we've had it when we bought a big plow truck. We kept one. We got used to it all winter. Then we flipped it out on auction and got more than we were going to get out of the trade in the first place. That money ended up in the general fund. We couldn't have repurposed that money. There's two fire trucks sitting at the DPW right now. They're going to go out for auction.
Probably worth the further discussion. It's probably worth putting it on and vetting it with advisory.
Yep.
My one advice to you, Sean, is find other communities that are doing this because this is unusual to me. You know, I mean, I've, I've involved this a little bit and I've not seen revolving funds. So I think it might get some confidence if you find other communities.
Yeah, I have a listen.
Okay, great. So we've got, so before we close the warrant, the five articles that we're adding are creative fund for ride sharing, a lodging statute for Airbnb, the unclaimed property statute that we never adopted, the article to determine the town will accept property through a deed and move foreclosure, and then a revolving fund for surplus, surplus equipment. Do we have a motion to add those to the warrant?
Yes, I would, I also wondered, do you want to eliminate twelve, the regional school capital budget?
Oh, yeah, that was already, yeah, that, we can take things out. We don't need to have it open to take those off.
Okay.
And then all the other one was to revise the twenty-third, the Article twenty-three on this list to change it from a land use zoning article to change, change to an easement.
And also I don't know if this matters in terms of.
Yep.
In terms of the order, as we were talking about moving Heidi's.
Right. I think we can play, we can play around with the order.
I assume the order doesn't require.
No, no. So do we have a motion to add those five?
So moved.
I said second.
All in favor? Okay. Next item on our agenda, administrative items and. Administrative items and routine business finance director, budget development update.
I did send out an update to everybody. Nothing's really changed that much from the last time I sent you the model. Advisory's meeting next week and the week after. I did speak with Dawn Patori, and she said she's going to have the final school budgets to me by the middle of next week. As soon as I get that, I'll plug it in and send everything out, so.
Excellent.
Are you still about $150,000?
I think it was like $195,000 was the difference, when I looked at it quickly today, when you sent that.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
Close.
Because they couldn't meet last night because of the problem with the website.
No, they, they met.
Oh, they did? Okay.
No, I don't think anybody could meet last night.
They had a joint meeting. I think they had a joint meeting with Dover.
Okay.
No, actually, they didn't. Stephen Layne, he told me he was going to send four representatives, which would not create forms, therefore, it could go forward.
They did. I think it was just a presentation by the school committees with their budget, so.
It was.
So they just went and listened. The, okay, thank you, Sharon. Thanks for all, I know you've been, I think that was version seven of the model, so.
It's version seven. I noticed that too.
Town administrator, Pine Hill Access Road, letter of support.
We went back to Representative Linsky and asked him about carrying forward the town's request to re-up its original 2012 or 2013 request for 1.3 million. And at that time, Mr. Linsky said that he would not move any, move that forward unless he had a signed letter from all five selectmen making that request. So this is a draft letter to make that request, and.
Did you send that to us? I'm sorry, there's gotten so many.
Yeah, it was sent today, so.
I don't know if I ever had a chance.
I can edit right into it.
Instead of editing the whole thing right now, it might be better to send it out to you and send your comments back. I know Paul had.
Did you give us revised or renewed?
Renewed.
I don't, I wouldn't put new superintendent. He's been here for a couple of years now.
I wrote this actually last.
I wouldn't put new.
Okay.
And it would be, yeah.
So what about your proposals to postpone us to the next meeting?
Well, no, I was going to say that you brought up an issue today about the actual, the reference name of emergency Pine Hill Access Road, and Diane dug up the original article.
I think since we haven't had time to really review this, let's table it till the next meeting.
But do you want to have people review it and send me their?
Yeah, if we could, because I think it's important that we can do them sooner rather than later.
Yeah, let's do that, and then I'll compile the changes.
Do we need to vote that we're, that we're going to send a letter in support of this?
Well, you'll adopt it at the next.
Okay.
Yeah, that would have to be signed.
Okay.
It's 10 past 10.
Yep, I see the clock, and that's why I'm trying to get through this stuff. Okay, and the personnel matters, consideration of appointment of interim town clerk Jackie Morse. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Got a question. Does it need to be for a term? Does it need to be a date?
Yes, to the annual.
Till the, till the next election, is that correct?
Until the next election and the successor is qualified. Town clerks have a weird thing. When a new town clerk is elected, there's a seven-day waiting period before that clerk can be sworn in. So for the seven days after the election, she'll be the interim. And assuming she wins the election, then she can be sworn in as clerk. So I would just use the language that I put in.
I don't think we got that in our packet, did we?
So I moved the language that was.
That was sent by Carol, by the town clerk. Okay.
I second Paul's motion.
All in favor?
Sorry, guys. I'd like to see the language.
Yes.
You didn't read it when, did you see it when Carol sent it to us?
I didn't.
It's not in our packet.
Okay, so my language was to appoint Jacqueline R. Morris temporary town clerk beginning April 2nd, 2020, to serve until the annual town election, May 12th, 2020, and until her successor is qualified.
So moved.
Straight out of the sketch.
Great, so moved. Thank you.
All right, all in favor? Thanks, Sharon. No, it was important that we got, I don't know why I was here, but I know I had seen that when you had sent it, so over email. Select board member reports. The one thing I do have to report on, from my side, I've been on the teacher contract negotiation committee, and on Monday, we came to a tentative agreement. It still needs to be ratified by the teachers' union and by the school committees, but there is a tentative agreement in place at this point.
Good job.
Yeah, very good.
So, any other select board reports? If not, then I will adjourn to executive session, not return to open session.
Do we need to do these executive sessions?
Carol, sorry, I don't see any email with that. So sorry about that.
Sorry, Paul, you asked if we, if we have to do.
I think it's 10 past 10. Some of us has to get to it in the morning.
We do have to discuss one of the items, the second one, and it's going to take five minutes.
Okay, so can we not do the library this time?
Do you have something with the library?
Yeah, I have some good updates. I have good news for a change.
Let's just do it, and we'll be out of here.
But I could do it whatever order, but it's quick, but it's.
What?
You want to hear it?
Oh, did we vote to close the warrant? Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol.
Do I have a motion to close the warrant?
So second.
All in favor? Thank you.
My own self-interest.
All right. So now I'm going to adjourn to executive session. The board will not return to open session. Item one is MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation petition to the town, the chair so declares library. Item two, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Town administrator, I need a second and a roll call vote.
You so declare on item one?
I do so declare. I need a second and a roll call vote.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Yon, Mr. Durensis.
Durensis votes aye.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moore, aye. Having postponed, having passed by a vote of five to zero, the open session is now closed, and we will not be returning to open session. We're now in executive session. Thank you.